Good evening, Canby. Welcome to the City Council Work Session this evening for April 16, 2025. Tonight, we will be, as the work session, we will be reviewing our operating policies, guidelines, and procedures, and potentially, City Charter Review Committee conversation. So we have, as the City Council and Mayor, we have a series of just that, operating policies and guidelines and procedures that we follow. We have had a committee of Counselor Patton, Counsel President Hensley, and Counselor Davis reviewing the current policies that we've had, and with a couple of revisions and some conversation with the help of our attorney, Emily Gamont. We are here tonight to discuss the changes, and any other suggestions that may come up in the conversation this evening, hopefully to make some quick revisions and have this on a future agenda here for us to approve. So, I mean, anything before I kick it over to Emily? No? Okay. Emily, good evening. How are you?
Doing pretty good. How are we all doing?
Great.
On a beautiful sunny Wednesday, third one in the row. How could we be so lucky?
I know.
And we're lucky to be here.
Yes, lucky to be here, in service of the great city of Canby.
That's why we get paid the big bucks, Emily.
Right, that's right.
At least I do. Y'all are volunteers, is what I understand. So, okay. So we've got some council rules to present to you today, and really, the credit for the work that you see in front of you, on the screen there, is the work of the Subcommittee, who spent quite a lot of time putting this together. I'll start off by saying that, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, these, this version, these suggested revisions to the council rules are based in part on the League of Oregon Cities' model rules, with amendments to tailor it to Canby's characteristics and needs, things that work, our own special procedures and that sort of thing. Has everyone had a chance to at least glance through this? Okay. I don't want to waste your time by going page by page through this document. I don't think that's going to be effective for you. Would it be helpful to start off with, if anyone has any particular questions about the process, or the purpose of council rules, or overall structure, kind of big-picture stuff to start off with?
So, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So we have all these rules, and we're supposed to read them all and follow them, I guess, but do we, if we're not following them, or we don't think we're following them, would we just raise up and say, hey, I think we're not following the rules? Or how do we do that? I can, I can just, I can just see myself going through and studying these things and getting really good at them, and then being, interrupting the business of the city by saying, point of order.
That's a fair question. I don't believe that we've addressed. They're guidelines. I don't feel like there's any teeth to them, but it didn't really get addressed, so that would be a good conversation to have now. How do we enforce these policies?
Yeah, so hearing a couple of things in the question. The first is, when do rules become more of a hindrance than a use? And the purpose of these rules is to be useful to you, and set expectations, and help guide your process. But there is true, there is a point in which you've made so many rules that anyone can invoke a point of order and stop business in a way that's not useful. So, the purpose of these rules is to not cross the line into a hindrance. I don't think that they do. As for what are, what's the teeth? One of the potential revisions for conversation today is, in the very last section of these draft rules, there's a reprimand procedure to issue a public reprimand against anyone who is in violation of these rules, or city ordinances, resolutions, policies, that sort of thing. So particularly to the question of what's the teeth here, that's the teeth here. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah. That's good. I mean, yeah, I'm not, you know, do it, I just.
It's a fair question.
I was like, rules, to know what, how much, how much rule, the rules is.
I think, to go along that, with that question, one of the things that came up in this process is that much, nothing in these can conflict with the charter, and the charter doesn't really have any mechanisms for removal or anything like that. And so, trying to put something into the policies and guidelines would then be contrary to the city charter, and it was the majority of the folks on the committee that, with as small of a group as this is, to have some sort of mechanism like that could be very dangerous. And, and so, that, that is sort of why the, the mechanisms to hold various, to hold people accountable are not as robust as some people might think.
And legally, they really can't be either, apart from the charter. You, you each hold a seat by the will of the constituency, and so, council doesn't have the authority to go against that will by removing someone from their seat.
Okay. So, and I think this was done before, so there really is nothing, like, I could just not show up for four years, and then I'd still be on the count. I mean, just, I'm just, I can't.
Your seat would be deemed a vacancy, and it would be filled.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just kind of, so there is, there is, there is mechanisms for removing people for certain things.
That's in the charter, though, right?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the charter.
So a charter thing, so we, so we could revise the charter, if we wanted to.
No, only the people by a vote can.
Why not? We could propose a, go through the process, and maybe convince them, maybe not convince them, to do a thing. Because one of the things, the question I asked you earlier this week was, what happens if three people resign at that point? Is, is there's,
There's no quorum then, yeah.
There's no city business can, can, can take place, at least according to the current rules, and then we go to state rules and stuff like that. So I think there's some revisions of the charter that might be useful.
Yeah, and that's a part of this process with the Subcommittee, has been keeping an eye on things that could be addressed through charter amendments. I've got a, a running list somewhere on my computer that I can pull up later, we can talk about that. But certainly clarifying the vacancies language, what counts towards a quorum and what doesn't, is one of those things.
Any comments, questions, or? Everyone's good. We're wrapped this up 45 minutes early.
Hey, looks like we did a good job. No one has any questions or complaints.
I can walk us through it in a more detail?
The complaints will happen later.
I would just say, some of the things that I would like to point out that are baked in here, that are very different from what was in the, in the previous policies and operating guidelines, is very poignant to what we are seeing tonight, with so many ordinances and resolutions on our agenda. How it currently works is, if there are second readings for ordinances and such, each one of those need to get done individually, whereas, in this document, it essentially lays out a mechanism that those ordinances can be put on a slate. So, instead of doing the second readings individually, as long as there has been, as long as the ordinance was originally approved by a unanimous vote, and there is no new information regarding any of the ordinance or ordinances for second reading, or any contentions, if there is, they can be removed, similar to how we do our consent agenda, but essentially, all those second readings could be done as a slate. So instead of doing them all individually, they would all be done in one shot. And so, that would be something that would help speed up the time through, through that process.
Would we start with a roll call, though? Don't we just?
It would still be a roll call, but you'd be approving all of the ordinances.
Okay.
But if you had a question on one, like you said, like, like on the consent agenda, you could pull, I'd like to remove ordinance number A, B, C, and for separate discussion, and then we could do the rest of the slate, and then revisit that one.
That was something that was in the model, the, oh, the League of Oregon Cities' model policy and operating guidelines, that we felt was a good idea to, to move forward with.
Since we seem to pontificate so much, we thought, anytime we can just save time would be a good thing.
Probably was.
Emily, Emily, if you wouldn't mind, I wouldn't, I think it would behoove us to maybe just kind of leaf through here, through these, and just address some of the changes, and why we made the changes, or why the changes were suggested.
Sure. One of the big areas that I'm looking at here is the public comment arena, and that's within Chapter 5. If you, I guess I have scroll power, huh?
I'm not sure if it's going to work, since it's a Word document. I might have to scroll it. Oh, okay.
She's got scroll power.
Okay. Close your eyes so you don't get nauseated by the zooming screen.
It seemed to be in Chapter, Chapter 5 is motions and voting.
Nope. We may have a misnumbered index in our draft. Let me get an actual page number. Continue closing your eyes.
Comment.
Do you see you go by? Okay, so.
Chapter 4.
We're looking at the public comment section here, beginning bottom of page 6. So, you guys offer two public comment periods during your regular meetings, which is great. It's important that everyone's clear on the fact that, except when state law requires otherwise, public comment during public meetings is not an entitlement. It's something that you open and solicit, because it's a good idea to have the public come and talk to you about the business you're conducting here. But given that it's not an entitlement, you do have inherent authority to regulate the manner in which public comment is given, regulate the topics that public comment can cover. And nine times out of 10, these things are not issues, and everything that I've seen from your public commenters has been great, and very useful, and polite, and all that good stuff. But we have seen, in this day of especially remote attendance for council meetings, that the risk of having a disruptive public commenter has gone up quite a bit. And so, one of the steps that we recommend taking in order to prevent that from happening, and then being able to effectively address it if it does happen, is to have a really robust public comment language that explains what kind of behavior is acceptable, what kind of behavior is not acceptable, what kind of topics can be commented upon, what can't be commented upon, and what happens if someone violates these rules. So that's one section in these rules that have been really, that has been really beefed up. Any questions about that one?
Doesn't look like it.
So, I have a question, or a comment, or something.
Or something.
So somebody gets online and starts saying all kinds of terrible, awful things, just for the fun of it, which I've heard happen sometimes. So what do we do? Mute him? Or do we, or do we pretend that, that we don't care what he says? Or do we stare at him, or make funny gestures? I don't know.
What's, 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 what is the remedy here for that, according to the rules, and the charter, and all the legal realities?
The mute button is the safest option, and I believe that our tech setup allows whoever's driving the Zoom bus to mute someone over their objection even. It's a little more difficult to kick people out of public meetings, because public meetings are supposed to be open to the public, but, did you have a?
Yes, I have a comment. So, my understanding is, that was the reason why we went to the webinar setting, because it allows us to have more control over who's going to be on Zoom. And so, it's set up that, you know, we find out ahead of time who's going to be there, and then we give them the opportunity to be a panelist, and so nobody else can come in through that process.
And that panelist provision can be revoked at any moment?
Yes.
Yeah.
So Teresa has the power.
Yes, she has the magic buttons over there.
So follow-up question on that. So what if it's not on the internet, but somebody in one of those chairs, that starts being disruptive, and, and?
Well, we talked about that last week in our training.
Which is still in the leave. Okay. I just, yeah.
It's, it's, it's hard, logistically and visually, to drag someone out of a room. Like, that's never a good look. If there is a public commenter who is reaching that level of disruption, the, the safest thing to do is to adjourn, and then end the meeting, have the person removed, and then reconvene once the person is removed. But you don't, you don't want like a physical struggle over the mic, if that should, that should be avoided at all costs.
I know you talked about it last week, but I just want to reiterate it, and there is a plan, just not everybody sit around with their mouths open, like, what are we doing?
Yeah. Yeah, no. We, we can't let this become a forum for hateful speech, speech that, you know, fighting words, something that falls into a First Amendment exclusion, that sort of thing.
Or, you know, pub, you know, public argument, or private arguments carried out in public.
Exactly. This is not the forum for that sort of thing. Any other questions or comments on public comment? No? Okay. Let's see here. Subcommittee, what other procedural things do you want to highlight here?
I think the big one is the accountability piece at the very end. I mean, if memory serves me correctly, you know, we, there was a baking in of, there was a tying in, 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 in some of our stuff, when it came to, if something is remanded to us from, like, the Planning Commission for our review, there was things to say, rather than baking that into this document of how that's supposed to run, it was like, refer to what is used on the Planning Commission side. So that way, it's consistent for public, public comment and those, or for.
For hearings, yeah.
Yeah, public hearings and all that stuff.
Yeah, so that, there's one process to keep track of. The Planning Commission is very hearing-heavy, and so, we know that that, that process works well, and so, we will, the idea is to defer to that process, so there's good standardization across both, both bodies.
Another one that took a bit of work was sort of memorializing the way our agendas are set up. So originally, there wasn't a whole lot in the document about what that looked like, and what was in the boilerplate document was very different from ours. So we, we really kind of cleaned that up, and then Emily had some questions about, is this really what you want to do? Are you sure this is how it is? And, and we confirm that that is, that is in fact how we kind of do our agenda. What else?
There was some language in the model rules that said that the agenda must be sent out seven days in advance. So we, we took a look at that, and, and lowered that a bit to say, you know, we're going to do the best we can to get it out seven days in advance, with full recognition that things happen sometimes. So, you know, if it's a day late, or whatever, you won't be in violation of the rules, because the rules account for certain realities, for example.
Yeah, and we, we made sure not to bake in any onerous, I think in the original boilerplate one, there was some more comment about like Roberts Rules of Order and that process, and we stripped some of that out to make it a little, a little more easygoing on that. The, the big one, I think, that will, that there might be some questions on, is going to be the accountability piece at the, at the very end.
We can start talking about that, then. So.
Can you scroll down to that, Emily?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The scroll interval won't let me put the whole thing on the, the screen at once, but, um, so you can see a Roman numeral 1, and then a subsection A with the red track changes along the sides. So the, the red check, the track changes denoting new language that we've, we've added to these model rules. So what this does is give council an avenue for disciplining members who violate these rules, ordinances, charters, state laws. Discipline is a public reprimand, because really, the council's in a body that can do much more to itself than that. Also have the option of revoking the stipend in there as well. That's, that I think will have to be subject to some discussion, if we want to include that. But it's important, so the guidance that we get from, from O G E C, as you know, is the, is the arbiter of public meetings laws, is that this has to be classified as discipline in order for council to be able to go in an executive session under the, to consider the disciplining or dismissal of a public official, et cetera. So that's why we have the big scary discipline word in here. It's also important that there is some sort of process involved in, in issuing a public reprimand, so that there are procedural protections for both the person who may be subject to the reprimands, and then for the council going through with the reprimands. And what that includes here is a very basic notice to the person who may be subject to a public reprimand, so that they understand the basis on which they may be reprimanded, and then giving that person the opportunity to respond to the alleged basis in that notice, before council can go through with adopting a resolution to issue the public reprimand.
I'm questioning how that's going to work in practice. So, I, I'm making a general nuisance of myself, or whatever, and they want to reprimand me. Is that going to be like, you know, Jim's going to say, I moved that, we reprimand Dan, and then we say, okay, but we first must write it down, and then gave it to me, I mean, I'm just trying to.
It would be, it would be across probably multiple meetings, so there would be an executive session to consider whether to issue a public reprimands, and then.
So the mayor would call an executive session, or one of us would move to call an executive session.
And it may be after the fact. So something may be occurring during the meeting where you're being belligerent to Counselor Davis, and he takes offense to it, and then the next day decides that he wants to, you know, file, you know, something under these guidelines, then yeah, then that would be the.
And then he would talk to you, and then you would call a meeting, or one of us would try to call a meeting. I'm just trying to think, because it says the council will, but if I'm on the council, I'm the one that's part of the problem, then the council will means something like, some three.
Again, it would be a majority aspect of the council. So, if you're the only abstention for your belligerent behavior, then we would still have an executive session in that regard.
Okay.
And, so.
I'm just trying to imagine how it would like to, in real life, if it happened.
So Emily, in regards to that, now again, my understanding is, was that if there was to be a reprimand of a counselor, that it had to be a unanimous decision, but I'm not seeing anything in this, that that's the case, or it's just a, a majority, is that just one of those?
Yeah, there's nothing.
It's a wives, old wives' tale that we.
I'm going to.
Yeah, it would, it would be a state law or something in your charter that would set that requirement, and I'm not aware of.
No, I know we can't invite, you know, vote anyone off the island. It was more, does it have to be a unanimous vote of the council to, for example, to, you know, yeah, to, to censure, or to revoke their stipend for X amount, or?
Your charter doesn't require it.
Okay.
Yeah, so obviously, if I'm being annoying and belligerent, I'm going to vote.
Yeah, so obviously, if I'm being annoying and belligerent, I'm going to vote against censuring myself, so can't have it unanimous, right?
Well, would you be able to even vote because it's being filed against you?
I don't know, why not?
Well, he is an elected member.
If we were including revoking stipend, then there could be a conflict of interest in the vote. But if it's just no economic.
So then the Ethics Committee could after me for voting.
Yes, so, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of jeopardy involved here, but if it's simply a public reprimand, then there's no financial gain or benefit to be had or avoided.
Okay. But I was thinking a majority probably would work better than just unanimous.
Sure. Counsel President Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is actually the only question I had about this document because I was in all those meetings, but maybe I checked out for a minute. I don't remember this language, and the language I remember is what struck from here about attendance. So at what point did we get this stronger language about reprimand, and it seems more general, not just about attendance now?
So this is what I understood a direction from that last meeting to be, is to explore language about a public reprimand. And then the comment regarding the vacancy is that I don't believe your charter would allow you to take that action within council rules unless there was a charter amendment. So you're right, this is.
This is different language than.
This particular language didn't go through the Subcommittee.
So how many times can I be absent? If the four, if four is not.
Well, we struck that language, so that is, I guess, up for debate now.
Yeah, so your charter says.
There is language in the charter about the number of meetings you can miss before you can be.
Considered a vacancy.
Considered vacant.
But there's nothing in there about revoking a stipend.
Yeah. And that's why this was, this, this question was posed to see if this absence thing is, will, would run afoul of the city charter and, and so therefore wouldn't work, or if it would align with it. And it sounds like it runs afoul of the city charter.
That's by interpretation, yeah. Yeah, so a vacancy under your charter is absence from the city for 30 days without consent of the council, or because of absence from meetings of the council for 60 days without consent. And council then has to also declare vacancies in both of those situations. Other questions?
Yes, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to thank Emily for working with our committee. A lot of work went into this. I'd like to thank Jason, too, who spent a lot of time on this and brought the issues up to the committee, and same with Tracy. I thought the committee worked hard on this. I think that the important part is for everybody to go back now and make sure you read these because it will then come back in front of the council for approval. And at that time is a good, a good time to bring up your discussion on them because we'd be here all night long, I think, just in, in trying to cover all the areas that we did on the committee. But again, you know, I, Emily and Maya, actually, too, was very, very helpful in keeping this moving forward.
Yeah, and I would, I would echo that. A big shout out to Maya. I ended up, after our initial meeting, I ended up sitting down with Maya for about four and a half hours, which was way more than what we had scheduled that day, to try and capture everything that Counselor Davis and Counsel President Hensley had sort of laid out in that initial document. I, I would say that maybe this referring, touching on what you had said, Counselor Davis, this, because this, in Chapter 10, Section A and B are a little different than what we had put down as a committee, it'd probably be good for people to spend some time to digest that, and that might cause some, some questions when we do the initial thing. The other thing I will say that is baked into here that was not, I don't think was baked in the original document was, we've set a timeline to review these every, is it three years?
Three, I think, is what we settled on, wasn't it?
Yeah, so that way it doesn't fall off of the plate because these, this set that we are, that we are adjusting are, is decades old before it had any changes to it. And so that way it's baked in with a trigger that it has to come up for, for a Subcommittee or the whole council, or however they would want to do it to, to just see how these things are going. So even if we get into this, there's nothing to, let's say we're a year into this document, and it's like, oh, wait, that thing ain't working, there's nothing to preclude us from cracking this back open and making those adjustments.
Yeah, and it's a living document. The more that you use it and interact with it, the more you're going to find it is not serving you in the best way possible. And so those three year, that three year intervals puts in some process for figuring out those pain points as they come.
Yeah, for me, I think the only thing that gives me a little heartburn is the new language in Chapter 10. And I'm not sure how to digest this just yet because it seems like there's not enough language in it to determine what would a public reprimand be, what would warrant the revoking of a stipend. I think we just, I think we need a little bit more clarification around this for me. But I'll, I'll keep reading it. That was the only thing that, when I read through the document, I was like, this is the only piece.
Where did that come from? Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize if I misunderstood direction from the Subcommittee after the last meeting, but, um, yeah, to Counselor Stern's initial question about teeth, I think it's, it's a tool to have some sort of accountability measure in these rules.
And then once I lose my stipend, how do I get it back?
That's not in here either, yeah.
So I mean, that's.
Six months good behavior.
And do I get back pay? Do I get what I missed back?
No. 9% statutory interest. Is there anything that anyone particularly wants to see going forward? Is there, does anyone have any just general comments about ways that the current rules you feel could be improved upon based on how you've been interacting with those rules? I mean, the Subcommittee's done a great job of keeping all that in mind through this process, but now is the time to share anything from the folks outside the Subcommittee.
Well, I'd be curious, I mean, speaking of Chapter 10 and the council accountability piece, I, what drove the Subcommittee to, I guess, adopt, or look at language like this?
The absences piece was brought to us by Counselor Patton.
Okay.
And I think in the, I think in the boilerplate version, there was a bit more, I want to say there was more about this. It wasn't, it wasn't called this. I think there was a different chapter in there that talked about these things. I cannot, I can't remember.
I'm looking right now. Yeah, so censure.
Yeah. And when, at least for me, censure seemed a bit harsh, so that's why when I had proposed language in my notes, I went with accountability because that seemed, it kind of softened the edges, I felt.
That's why we need to talk more about Chapter 10 because honestly, a public reprimand is censure. You're just using a different word.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the model rules, the censure process that LOC has in its model rules is essentially the same as what this draft shows, but in fewer words than this draft has.
Yeah, it's, it's essentially the same thing. So I think this chapter is the one that, for me, this needs more conversation. Other than that, the document, I'm pretty proud of the work we've done, so I'm happy with it, other than I want to revisit this chapter.
Counselor Waterman and Counselor Sterns?
I was just going to say, I appreciate the, the work on trying to streamline and make things more efficient. I think that's pretty important, especially when all of our, for all of our time with the work sessions and everything else. So I appreciate the effort in looking at that.
Counselor Sterns?
So I noticed for meetings, three counselors can call a meeting if we wanted to, but it seems like for practical purposes, it'd be very hard to have three counselors call for a meeting without actually having a meeting about it. That would probably violate the public meeting law to call a public meeting. I mean, three of us, but I have to find three because I could say, okay.
Yeah, three.
I, I want to do it. I asked Jim if he wants to do it. He says no. So I go ask Tracy, she says yes. I thought, and then I ask him, you know, Herman, no, and then Jason says yes, and then he's, so basically I've had to talk to all five members to get the three necessary.
But I think it's because it's an administrative thing, it's not a policy thing, so it doesn't count.
Because that wouldn't count, but you'd also have to have a subject for the meeting, too. And then of course.
As long as you're not discussing the subject, do you want to have a meeting about this?
Yeah, okay.
You're not deliberating anything.
Okay, now that's, that's fine, so I can go.
And three people can then, I mean, would then trigger the, the potentially scheduling of a meeting. However, if you can't get a quorum, then there would be no meeting.
Right.
Because nothing could be decided.
And you can go through the city administrator or to Maya to, to, to do it for you.
We've also talked about certain potential charter amendments. Do we want to look at that part right now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm pulling up my list. Okay, so certain areas that would be a good idea to clarify are your quorum requirements, specifically state whether the mayor counts towards quorum, and then specifically state whether vacant council seats count towards quorum or not. And it is within the authority of the charter to choose one or the other. Just the, the intent should be to make it very clear so that we don't have to go through any kind of interpretation to apply these things.
So just real quick, that is one of the things that was very different in this document compared to others, is the process that the council went through to appoint Counselor Sterns last year. That process has been memorialized in this document as far as timelines for posting the position, taking applications, doing the interviews, you know, that whole thing is now memorialized in here for, as process. Sorry.
No, thank you.
In the charter language?
No, in the, in the draft.
Chapter eight is, is how we do it. So we don't change our mind every time we do it. It's right here, chapter eight.
Another, another topic that's popped up for potential charter consideration is that requirement that any expenditure over $50,000 needs to be approved via ordinance two readings. That, that requirement does present some practical issues for staff, especially in the, getting contracts through with contractors that can sometimes be somewhat time sensitive, getting construction contracts approved while the sun is shining and the building season is still upon us, for example. So that's one to consider.
My question, is there a, a general consensus amongst other municipalities or legal Oregon cities of what that limit is, or is it just based on city size or?
They're, in my experience, and I have not audited all the charters in Oregon, but it's not really ever, it's rare to have that as a charter requirement. I know of one other city, but it is $100,000, and it is limited to purchasing or selling real property, so much, much more limited in scope. What other cities do, which, which Canby does as well, is have spending authority limits. So how much can the city administrator obligate the city to spend without taking it to council and then directors below that, and then sometimes even supervisors below that? So you do have that in conjunction with this charter requirement. Eileen has the authority to, via policy, to spend up to $50,000 inclusive. And then it goes down to 25 for your directors, and then managers goes to 10 or 15?
10.
10, yeah. So that's how most other cities handle it. I would probably keep that on the books for you guys if you were looking at taking this out of the charter.
Thank you.
The, the maximum approved absences before a council seat is considered to be vacant is also something to, that was on the list to consider if there was a, a charter committee convened. Organizational things, making sure that the charter articles are thematically consistent, then moving anything around that, you know, shouldn't be where it is. You have that miscellaneous provisions article at the very end that contains things that could probably folded, be folded into places that are more thematically consistent than a, just a miscellaneous catchall, for example. And that miscellaneous is where your 50K thing lives. Clarify boards and committees. So your charter addresses certain boards and committees, and then you have ordinances on the books that overlap a bit, and then, you know, address separate boards and committees. So it makes good sense for just administration purposes to have all, anything that has to do with a board or a committee kind of confined in one area or the other, for example.
And that is something weird right now that we have. So not only is there information about the boards and committees in our charter, but there's also a whole section that was tacked on to the end of the policies and operating guidelines regarding more about boards and commissions and all that. And so that, that's why in our initial meeting, there was a decision made to, to separate those two and not tackle updating that section of the document with the expectation we would either tackle that separately after this is dealt with, or after further conversation, tackling it along with any changes that might come with the city charter.
And one way where it could be somewhat efficiently, we could somewhat efficiently address the application of rules to committees, subcommittees, boards, that sort of thing, is to adopt by reference certain parts, certain applicable parts of council rules. So decorum and ethics, for example, is going to be universally applicable. Public comment could be pretty widely applicable, too. Certain areas aren't going to be as applicable, but we can, rather than recreate the wheel when it comes time to it, just simply refer back to the council operating procedures. I do have a note in my version that says that there's, there's one area where, that we flagged for council discussion about public comments being made to the presiding officer, but whether to allow kind of questions back and forth from council on that.
Yeah.
Let me pull up that page on the big screen for you. I can't see very well. We're looking at subsection nine right there, if that's visible to you, begins comments should be made to the presiding officer. So this is an area that we flagged for discussion with, with council as a whole on this point.
This is which section of the?
Which chapter?
We are in. One second while I go to the top of this chapter. Chapter one, general governance. Any thoughts on this language?
This is different than what we currently have?
I'm not sure your current operating policies addresses this.
It doesn't address it. Okay.
So this is a purely added-on section?
I believe this is from the LOC model.
With tweaks, yes.
And why was this added? Or why was it the feeling that this needed to be added?
Particularly why the Subcommittee included it, I'm not sure, but the general fear is that public comment is, is not, there's a danger in allowing for public comment to get in too far into a back and forth. It's not really, it's not a public hearing. You aren't, you know, soliciting comment under the law on particular matters. So if, if the, if the public is flagging an issue for you in the public comment period, the safest thing to do is to refer the issue to staff. But again, such a strict, like no questions whatsoever rule may not be helpful for the commenter to explain what's going on, and, you know. So there's, there's a balance to be struck here. And I guess the intent of this language is to find that balance. But I'll be curious, I mean, Mayor, you're the one who interacts with public commenters most frequently at this table. I'd be curious to hear if you have any thoughts about. this table. I'd be curious to hear if you have any thoughts about the inclusion of such language or anything like that.
We're talking about item nine under this, about the clarifying questions. Yeah.
Yeah, this one struck me, and it's, yeah, I need, I need to noodle it a little bit more.
Page eight, item nine.
I, I mean, I, I think there have been times where that's been the case. I just, yeah, I just, I, I worry about putting public comment in at least some of the clarifiers in a box. And I get that in the future, there may not be, uh, there may be councils or a mayor that would much rather get into a, an argument or a discussion. Um, and that's why that, that may be added in there. Um, so, yeah, I'm not totally sold on it, but, yeah, these are council guidelines, not the mayor's, so.
If memory serves me correctly, this little section was, there was a bit of discussion about this, as to how this should be worded, how restrictive it should be. Um, and so this was essentially the compromise for either having too much or not enough, but still allowing the option for council to interact with the individual essentially through the chair.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Um, in my experience with liaison roles, um, this provision would kind of put bumper rails on the conversation. So you're not sitting there having a debate and trying to flush out their issue right and then, then, and there. A clarifying question, so you understand their issue, and then maybe perhaps put it on a future agenda for further discussion. That way you're not sitting here using thirty minutes of public comment time trying to flush out exactly what this person is bringing to us and what they want done about it. I felt like that was kind of where we were going with it. It's like, they've come, presented their issue, maybe somebody isn't quite clear on what they need, there's a clarifying question or two, then we revisit it a later date. That was just to kind of keep bumper rails on that back and forth, not, it's not supposed to be a two-way conversation. They're coming to us, presenting their comment.
Something else I, oh, I, I forgot about this was, um, to go along with this public comment section, there's always, there's also some pretty major changes to the comment card. So there has been concerns in the past about, um, if a citizen comes in and makes a public comment, do they really want someone from the city to follow up with them? Yes or no? Uh, those sort of things. So there is more information on the public comment card as far as what they would like to see as follow-up actions. The other thing that was added to them on the back is during our public hearings and stuff, there is an opportunity for people to pool their time, but there's no way of knowing, someone could come up here and say, well, I'm pooling, I'm pooling three people's time.
Yeah.
And then we don't know who they are. And so if, if someone is pooling time from other people present, they have to put their, those people's names on the back of the card to, to essentially say, these are the people whose time is being pooled. Um, so that way we have a record of it. And then if that person later wants to come up and say something, then the question, then it's like, well, you've pooled your time, so how do you want to do that?
Yeah.
Um, so that is something else that, that, and I, I would, I would think that for when we do bring this up, I would just mention, it would probably be good to include a copy of that updated comment card in the, in the final to what we, what we review when we actually vote on this.
And as noted in item eight, those pooled comments are limited to four people for a total of twelve minutes on that subject.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
This is a clarifying question for me, um, as I learned how to be a city councillor. My understanding was when somebody's there doing public comment, he's really just talking to you, Brian, not to us. And so we just stare and smile and nod our heads, even though, I mean, I'm not, I'm kind of facetious, but we, we were, but we're not really, it's appropriate, not for us appropriately to go either, uh, interact with them directly or, or, um, anything to that effect. Um, so, and, and, so is that, that's what's expected of me as a councillor, while I'm not the mayor and I'm not in charge of the meeting at all.
That's you, that has been the status quo, I mean, in terms of their comments are being directed, um,
Because sometimes I get the feeling that some of the, some of, some of the, some of the, um, some, some of the commenters are, are issuing, um, frustration and, um, complaints about the council itself. And of course, my, my temp is really tempted, I've, I've, I've restrained myself to actually say, hey, I, uh,
And that's what's in there.
Right, that's what. I'm, uh, I, I want to respond to this. That looks like an accusation to me, even though it doesn't seem to, I'm not sure, but, um, but then again, if we're not going to do action on it, then maybe, so.
Well, the comments come to and through the mayor, even though they're talking to all of us, they come through the mayor. There's one instance where I remember in recent history where a count, a constituent came and had grievance and wanted to call a certain councillor out by name, and that's when he had to step in and be like, comments come through me, as to help keep decorum in the whole meeting. Um, because they, they took issue with one particular councillor, and that's, that's not what this forum was for. It's like, you have the grievance, then you speak to the mayor. That's, it's, it's more about, uh, keeping peace and calm and decorum.
So, but if somebody's getting a public comment and I'm interested in the subject of it, I could ask you if I could address that?
Yeah, that's what's laid out here.
To and through the mayor.
So once you get the floor, then you can ask a question.
But if it's, if it's clock's ticking, though.
Well, no, I mean, that's, that's at my discretion.
Okay.
Well, yeah, that would be after, essentially, this would be after they have made their comments. So for instance, the other day, when Dr. Perman was here talking about his thing, when he was done, I asked the mayor, could I ask a clarifying question? And I asked him about, you know, do you expect people to park in your cul-de-sac bulb, walk all the way to the Fred Meyer, purchase groceries, walk all the way back to get to your car? And his answer was yes. And that was the end of it. Now, if he and I started talking about the merits of this idea, then the mayor would be like, whoa, 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 that's not what this is about. So that's sort of what that is. Rather than, because what, what sometimes happens is, one, one of the problems that we have now is when they, when folks make those comments, if we have questions, we essentially have to save them until the very end during our council comments and liaison reports.
And they don't have to be here anymore.
Correct. They're not here. We're just two hours later. Our brains are fried. It's like, what, what is even the point of this? So that's, that's one of the reasons why we kind of baked in this little, this caveat, so that there can be some clarify, clarification and stuff to prevent that from happening again. And then all of a sudden, we have to reach back out to that person and all that.
So, so it sounds like we're already doing this. We're just actually putting it in.
Clarifying it.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Yes.
And to Daniel's point on asking questions forever and ever, that's also addressed in number nine. The questioning is, is limited to the three minutes as well. We can't keep asking questions forever either.
Any other charter pieces that, or did we touch on all those that were?
That exhausts my list. That came up in the, in the subcommittee. Um, but this is an ongoing thought process. So if anyone has anything, I'm, I'm holding a list apparently, so send it along and I'll add it to the list. Um,
What's the timeline, if I can ask? What's the timeline on a amendment to charter? Obviously, you have to put it up through an election, and so it's, I guess November is probably too late for May. Um, and so.
It depends on how much you want to spend on the election. Some are cheaper than others.
Well, I, I'm just curious, so like, and then, then you back out, there's got to be a deadline, and then, and I want to, obviously, there's changes that should be made, we should probably make them quick, if, if we can agree that there's something that we should, or at least propose them. I guess we can change and propose them. And then I like to see the process go faster rather than slower.
Well, and that's where I think the idea being, is, that's the conversation piece, is there a, a council subcommittee on the, on the charter that needs to be convened and discussed? So, and then how quickly that could, is able to move. You know, if we want to make the November deadline, then they've got to move.
You're going to have until about the end of August in order to make the November ballot.
Thank you.
But we did build into the budget, um, a cost for the election, um, in case you choose to refer it in the next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Patton?
So the way I've kind of envisioned this whole charter thing is that there being, because, these are just my thoughts. Rather than putting one big plan out of all of the changes and have one of them be a contentious thing and kill everything, even though it would cost more money, to do it in chunks. So there would be like, look, we, there's general wording changes or sort of boilerplate things that need to be done. All of those things are part of vote A. And then there are things that are updates that really need to happen, that might be a little contentious, but we really don't see anything that's too bad. And that would be vote packet B. And then there would be like, big ticket things, like, we want to paint all city, like, we, we demand that all city buildings are painted, you know, purple with white polka dots. That one would be its own thing, because that would be people, people like, no, absolutely not, this is ridiculous.
Absolutely not.
Fail.
Level the size of the council.
Or something, right? So those sort of things. And it's possible that some of those easier things could be hashed out and done sooner, but some of them may end up being till later.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In order to move this along, since we're running out of time, I would just recommend that, uh, we get the interest of councillors that want to be on the charter committee and convene as soon as possible and make recommendations back to this group.
Okay. Are there, is there interest?
I have time.
Okay, Daniel can add my.
I have time.
So Counselor Patton, Counselor President Hesley, and Counselor Sterns?
We have time now, like I said.
Yeah, it's after October the 15th.
Fifteen. I would send no last.
So, and that works for us. We're able to do that here, convene that committee, that subcommittee?
Uh, yeah, I'm ninety percent certain, but I'll verify.
Okay, okay. Good, get to work. Uh, good. Any other topics on the policies and guidelines and the potential for charter amendments?
My only question is, when are we going to be able to revisit chapter ten and call it in so we can work out our?
Eileen and I will look at the upcoming
Yeah.
season here coming up, because we have
I feel like it's almost done.
Full agendas coming up and full work session Wednesdays.
Would you like another work session on this item, or just be presented with a resolution adopting the council policies and you could have discussion?
I think we need more discussion on chapter ten. I'm not sure we're happy with the language.
The subcommittee could continue to discuss and then make a recommendation in the form of resolution. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
And then if we need a wider discussion on it, then we can, yeah.
Great.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
So subcommittee will handle ten, right? Chapter ten, council accountability?
I feel it's tweaking, yeah.
And then how long do you guys need, just so that we can then see that language and, and move this forward to a completion and, or adoption?
It sounds like the May agendas are pretty
We're getting there.
Beefy, so maybe
Plus it's budget month.
Yeah, I'm thinking
Going out till June would be easier?
Yeah. It's not like this thing's on fire and we have to do it right now.
So maybe the second meeting, well, second meeting in June is brutal, because that's all the budget adoption stuff. So potentially the first meeting in June?
June four. So we would have to, subcommittee would have to meet sometime between now and then.
Or now and before, week before, so it could get posted. Yes?
I would also encourage the rest of the council, if you have comments, get them to the subcommittee or get them to us.
Send them to Maya.
Yeah, send them to Maya. If, because, but please read these, because they are, there's, you know, there's a few changes. And we'd like to know your comments, so that when we get into the council agenda item, we're not doing it then.
Yeah, yeah.
Was the whole point of this cop, so I'm presuming the only issues that are in, uh, flocks are this chapter ten piece, because everything else should have been addressed with everybody preparing for this.
Well.
True, but.
But please read through.
Did you receive the annotated version of the council, of the new rules with my comments on it?
Yes, that's what was in the pack. That's what's in the packet.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Good.
As far as subcommittee goes, I'm fairly flexible, except Thursdays are out.
I will let you guys noodle that outside of the work sessions, so that we can, um, councillor, or sorry, our IT department needs to take a moment to do some adjustments. So we need to, I'll let you guys haggle dates momentarily. So if there's nothing else, we'll end the work session. Seeing that, we will end, end the work session, and we will take a five-minute, uh, IT break.
IT break.
Thank you for coming. I'm very excited to be here. 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 I'm very excited to be here.
Good evening, Cambie. Welcome to the April 16th, 2025 regular city council meeting. If you please stand for the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. To her, Father, thank you so much for this beautiful weather that you have blessed us with. Thank you for this great community and the people that are gathered here tonight. I ask that you protect our police officers and our other first responders as they do their very best to keep us safe, bring them home safely every night to their families. That is paramount for, for them and for us. I just want to say, as we go through Holy Week here, where many of us will be celebrating your, your death and resurrection, I thank you for that amazing gift of grace and forgiveness. I ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a very full agenda this evening, so we'll go through the necessary items as quickly as we can. Eileen, do we have any new employee introductions this evening?
Uh, we do? We do, yes. Monica.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is myself, Monica Stone, with the City of Cambie Wastewater Treatment Plant. Good to see you tonight. I'm excited to bring to you our current employee that we've recruited and has been here for about the last three, four weeks, Quinn Wolf. And he is our new maintenance technician at the treatment plant. We're so excited to have him here. He is helping us get on top of a lot of maintenance acquisition that we have and get on top of a lot of capital projects that we're planning for next year. Quinn? There you go.
What a turnout. Very excited to be a part of the City of Cambie, especially with all the projects that Monica's filled me in on, to be a part of a treatment plant that's actually going to have so much growth and so much new things happen to it, it's pretty rare to see, so to be firsthand experience with that for maintenance-wise is amazing, so very excited. Love the City of Cambie. I live right across the river in Wilsonville, so no more I-5, so I'm very excited, very happy to be with you guys, and looking forward to a long future with Cambie.
Welcome to the team, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have, I think, a swearing-in of a new police officer, based on the crowd.
Sure, good to be here.
Chief Trow, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Okay, I'm going to hold the mic close, because Gordon will get mad at me if I don't. And I like to stand up, so. All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. You know, this is one of my favorite things to do, is as chief of police. We have a swearing-in and an introduction of a new officer, and I'm going to have her come up now. Officer Meyer, come on up. So I want to tell you a little bit about Officer Meyer here. So she's our newest officer, who started with us on, actually, February 19th, 2025. She's currently in field training, learning procedures in the city, and having written reports and all that good stuff. Her passion for law enforcement began early. She actually went through the Portland FBI Teen Academy. She went through the Portland Metro Fire Camp, but she chose the right of the... Passion council day.
Them's fighting words.
And she was a police cadet for several years. She actually worked previously for, for the City of Breckham Police Department. She's dedicated to serving and protecting our community and is happy to be in Cambie. A little bit outside of work, Amy stays very active. She likes hiking, kayaking, paddle boarding, workouts, enjoys outdoors, quality time with family, and unwinding with her dogs. I think her and her brother have a little kind of side business of 3D printing, making drone parts, right?
True.
Is your brother here?
They both are.
Oh, nice. All right. One thing that I've noticed about Amy from day one is that she fit right into the department and became a team player right away, so I really appreciate that. I think you have some family members here. Usually we introduce them, but maybe there's a little bit too many.
I would just say, the back where, the back row, all family and friends.
Thank you for coming, everybody, we appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to have Judge Graff do the honors of actually swearing Officer Meyer in.
So I do have to be careful of the microphone. Okay. No, you have to come up by the microphone. Okay, raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Amy Meyer.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold...
That I will support and uphold.
The constitutions of the United States...
The constitution of the United States.
And the State of Oregon...
The State of Oregon.
The Charter and Ordinances...
The Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Cambie...
Of the City of Cambie.
Remaining in compliance with...
Remaining in compliance with...
The professional standards established...
The professional standards established.
By the department's mission...
By the department's mission.
Values and professional code of ethics...
Values and professional code of ethics.
Department policies and directives...
Department policies and directives.
And will faithfully perform the duties...
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the police officer...
Of the police officer.
For the City of Cambie, Oregon...
For the City of Cambie, Oregon.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. You need to sign it there, and then I sign it there. Even though Charmota wanted to say something about shiny boots, I held my tongue. Okay.
Okay, well, next thing we do, we have somebody in the badge on you, would you like to do that?
Ask a little if my parents come up.
Come on up.
Through the holes.
I wouldn't...
They pull through them. That works?
All right, Amy, this is your chance, if you would like to say anything to the city and to the council this time.
I'm very excited to be here. Cambie's treated me very well in the two months that I've been here, and I could not be more excited to be serving the city and the community, and I can't wait to see what the future holds for myself in here at Cambie. Thank you.
Pretty good. You're welcome. One last thing I want to say is, if you want to know our newest officers, they have the shiniest boots.
I, I was just going to ask Charmota to come up and see if his boots were as shiny as hers.
Might it demonstrate both of us that work for a living?
Oh!
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Judge Batton, you man-cut.
You're very welcome. Congratulations, Officer Meyer.
Thank you.
So we are going to take a very brief pause, so that Cambie PD and guests, apparently they have cake and stuff over at the police station or something, so we'll give them a moment to vacate the council chambers before we continue, so, already said, go.
Was that cake, cake or donuts?
I think it's, George, Chief Trow, that is cake, correct? Not donuts?
Cake, yes.
Yes, okay.
Oh, boy, that's funny.
Oh, he's got to be digging, don't you?
Well, he took the shot at me.
He did.
He did. Goodness sakes, did he ever?
Okay. Next on our agenda this evening is a, the Historic Preservation Month proclamation, and so I'll take a moment and read this. It's, "Whereas established in 1973 by the National Trust of Historic Preservation, Historic Preservation Month promotes historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting heritage, tourism, and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. Whereas the City of Cambie recognizes May as Historic Preservation Month and supports activities in the community to instill awareness and to promote our community's historic assets. Whereas nonprofit heritage organizations and their volunteers, including the Cambie Historical Society, Mark Prairie Historical Society, and the Cambie Heritage and Landmark Commission, are the backbone of Cambie's historic preservation work and effort. Whereas the Mark Prairie Historical Society, under the leadership of Judy Oz, Peggy Sigler, and a dedicated board of directors, have raised thousands of dollars in donations and grants, and rallied dozens of volunteers to restore the historic 1879 Mark Prairie High, uh, Mark Prairie Schoolhouse, after it was severely damaged in the 2021 ice storm. And whereas the public is invited to view the completed restoration after a ribbon-cutting ceremony on May 14th at 3:30 PM, when the school resume, resumes operation as a community center. Now therefore I, Brian Hotson, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Cambie, do hereby proclaim May 20, May 2025 as Historic Preservation Month, and I further call upon members of this community to join in commemorating this event by participating in the May 1st Thursday night market, where members of the Mark Prairie and Cambie Historical Societies will be sharing information about their organizations, and where you can take a guided historic site tour sponsored by the Heritage and Landmark Commission titled Big Lies, Half Truths, Crime, Scandal, and Intrigue on First Avenue. The Cambie Histor, Cambie History No One Tells You."
Ooh.
Dun, dun, dun.
Sounds mysterious.
Dun, dun, dun. Uh, given unto, and the dun, dun, dun is in here. Given unto my hand the 16th day of April, 2025, in the City of Cambie, and I do believe that Judy is here to receive this tonight, yes?
I'd just like to thank the community for backing us in their donations and supporting us during the last four years that we've been restoring this. Today is also National Spasmodic Dysphonia Voice Recognition Day, and I have spasmodic dysphonia. That's why I sound so bad. But thank you, everyone, for supporting us, and please come out and see us on any time, but especially on May 14th. Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you, you're welcome.
And with that, I have Carol Palmer, who's going to give a brief presentation on the landmark, the Heritage and Landmark Commission.
And I think you all have the presentation in front of you.
We do. How are you, Carol?
I'm good, I'm good. And are you putting it up on the screen? Okay, thanks. And what? Okay. Point, which way, right or left? Okay, we'll find out, okay. So, thank you, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here to just give you a brief update on what's been happening with the Canby Heritage and Landmark Commission, which seems like the appropriate thing to do, to kick off Historic Preservation Month, even though it's a couple of weeks early. Let's see which way I go on this one, let's see.
Carol, I think you have it upside down, maybe?
Yeah, that's probably true. There it is. Okay, so so far this year, we did go, think about what we wanted to do in terms of projects because this is a year where we, the Certified Local Government Grant is open to Canby. We're one of the cities that gets to participate in the odd years. And so we spent some time looking at the things that had been recommended in, first of all, the reconnaissance level surveys that we've been doing over the last three or four years. Those have had suggestions of work that we need to go forward with and also our Canby Historic Preservation Plan. In February, we obtained some cost estimates on the projects that we had selected. That's really important for submitting the grant. They, they want to know that we understand what we're doing and that we know what the costs are. And we also submitted the grant application. And we did get the grant. It's not one of those grants that's competitive in terms of there's winners and losers, but it does make a difference in terms of how much money you get in terms of what you ask. And our grant came in, we got everything we asked for, so we felt pretty good about that. Tyler really helped me a lot by getting, helping us get the grant estimates from, at several places. So that was great. We have developed a project plan. And in addition to that, we're also beginning work on a HLC member handbook. We think it's important when you join the HLC that you learn about what we do and have some direction and understand what you're, what you're in for. And we also have begun work on some Heritage and Landmark Commission goals, overarching goals in addition to the projects we're working on. So, see if I can do this again. Our project number one that we're going to be doing is historic property surveys that are more intensive than the reconnaissance surveys. When the reconnaissance surveys go out, they identify buildings that have a certain amount, have enough historic integrity and are of a certain age that they would, might qualify for a designation either locally or nationally. And the one thing we're missing, though, is sort of a deeper dive to find out what is the historic significance of that property. So the four residences are, and the two, one structure that's a church, you probably are familiar with it, on Northwest Second and Elm. And also we've got a structure on a building on First Ave, yeah, First Avenue. It's Aura Salon Building, built in 1925. So I've given you the dates of the buildings and also the, the addresses up there. We're going to gather information on historic significance, and we can use that in outreach projects, and I'll talk about that just a little bit later. But also we can start contacting those property owners and giving those reports to them and hopefully encouraging some of them to think about designating their properties. The other thing we really want to do is we want to upgrade our website. We want to transform the HLC website from something that's pretty boring to something that's much more engaging. If you're going to volunteer and work with us and you go to our website, the first thing you see is a half page of language out of the code. Literally, it's a half page. And nobody likes, nobody gets off on code speak, just maybe the attorneys, but not the rest of us. So we want to, it's pretty boring, it's pretty gray, it's pretty dull. So we have selected a bunch of photographs that we've taken over the last five or six years that are sort of give a feel for what you could be doing if you join the Heritage and Landmark Commission. We're adding a list of accomplishments, our work in progress, so you know what you're getting into. Oh, they're going to be doing this, I guess I'll be into that too. We're also adding some quotes. We'd love to get some, maybe some videos. I, when I went, I went out and looked at other cities and what they were doing on their websites. And I was really impressed by, say, West Lynn, where the mayor gave, on the volunteer page, the master page, not on every volunteer page, but on the major one, was a, a talk about how important it was to the city. On another website, I think it was Lake Oswego, one of the people that was actually a chair of one of the commissions talked about what it meant to them and how they felt about being on a commission and the opportunities that they saw. So those are the kinds of things I think that people really like to see. We want to replace the code language with a link to the code and then summarize the duties of the HLC in real people speak. The second part of that, this is, the second part of our plan is right out of our Historic Preservation Plan. We do not have anything on our website anywhere that talks to people about where, what are the historic properties in Canby? Where are they? And so we want to include those. We also want to have a complete list of the sites where we have done surveys so that you can go down and find an address, and if your address is on there, you can click on it and you can go read that survey about your property. We want to have FAQs about landmark designations, how do you do it? What's the benefits? What are the, the drawbacks? And we want to get folks started on information about how they would list a property. Also a process guide for property owners who are making alterations to their historic landmarks. There's a process they have to follow, they have to go to the planning commission, and some other things have to happen. And we want to have then links to other information sources and plus city contact information. The next one. Driving tours. This was an idea from Counselor Sassy when he was our liaison, talking about what we want to do is give people an opportunity to download from our website, driving tours. We're looking for something that's 60 to 90 minutes. We'd be curating it so it could be a certain specific architecture, it could be craftsman style homes. We could have it curated to a geographic area, southwest section of town. Or we could, an era, specific era in history, a specific time in history, a specific, you know, decade. Or by function, so we could have schools and churches, things like that. So people could pick and choose which one they really wanted to see. We want to have them again on the city website so we can download them. We've been working with the, thanks to Counselor Patton, working with the Lamont Falls and Landings Heritage Area. They are doing a similar project. And so we'll be able, and they're putting their tours also on their website, so our tours will end up on their website as well. And the nice thing is that their tours are going to be like full day and half day. And so ours, like, I think will be much more appealing, and that's a nice space to have a 90-minute tour, something a little more chewable. So we're going to be reducing our costs somewhat and hopefully reducing some duplication of effort by working together on that. So expanding our outreach, of course, is what we want to do as well. So this is just a brief summary of the financials. We got $15,250. We will be getting that from the National Park Service. And actually, it's already here, so we're not too worried about it. It's already in Oregon, that is. Then we, we do a lot of our matches with our staff time and with our volunteer time, and we can use that as match so the city doesn't have to cough up all of it. And then the city funds will be needing $5,250. So that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
I have no questions, but I will say again, Carol, thank you, to you and the, the commission because I know this is a deep passion of yours and everyone that's part of the commission. And you have all continued to do such amazing things to promote the historic preservation of Canby. And so thank you for continuing to do that. I know when you, you said you somewhat retired, that it would be short-lived, and so I'm, I'm glad that it has been. So thank you.
Thank you.
For you and that entire group and what they're doing, so thanks. Thank you. I do have one more proclamation this evening, and so it's, I'll read this here. Whereas Vietnamese refugees have proudly resided in the state of Oregon since the conclusion of the Vietnam War on April 30th, 1975. Whereas Vietnamese Americans have put forth their full toiling energy building the state of Oregon in a multitude of prominent areas, including industry, economy, culture, education, and military service. Whereas Vietnamese Americans have counted on the state of Oregon as being their second heart, mind, and family homeland. And whereas every year Vietnamese Americans celebrate Remembrance Day on April 30th to solemnly honor the 80, the 58,000 American servicemen and servicewomen that included 810 soldiers from the state of Oregon and more than 300,000 South Vietnamese soldiers who sacrificed their lives in the line of duty for freedom and democracy in South Vietnam from November 1955 to April 1975. Now therefore, I, Brian Hotson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Canby, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2025 to be the 50th Vietnamese, 50th anniversary of the Vietnamese American Remembrance Day and encourage all members of Canby to join in the observance. Given unto my hand the 16th day of April, 2025. And I believe Tao is here from the Vietnamese conflict.
Thank you very much for the proclamation and also with the certificate of appreciation. Yeah, I give the City of Canby.
Oh, thank you very much.
I am Tao, the President of the Vietnamese Community of Oregon. Thank you so much for the proclamation that recognized the Vietnamese American Remembrance Day. And this year we will observe the Remembrance Day in April 26th, 2025. Again, thank you for your honorable mayor and city council members.
Uh, next on the agenda, yeah, pass the room. We have a library funding presentation brought to you by our library director.
All right.
Good evening.
Get ready for this one. All right, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for having me today to do this presentation in front of you guys about library funding issues. And this is going to be talking a little bit about libraries in general and also our specific library. And I know there's a full agenda, so I'm going to go through it quickly, but give you enough information to walk away with something tangible. All right, so why are we are here? We are here for a couple of different reasons. Library district funding issues, our Canby Public Library funding issues, major changes to grant funding at the federal and state level, the city budget shortfall, and then an uncertain future for all libraries. So I'll get a little bit into all of this good stuff. So you're going to get sick of seeing this slide because I have it repeated over and over because this is the agenda and I'm basically just going to show you where we're at. But there's quite a few problems that libraries are facing right now. And what we're going to go over today is the library district funding and the sufficiency and sustainability of that. We'll talk about city contributions, rising costs, a collection budget that has not increased in several years, service standards that are being harder and harder to meet, staffing and burnout, circulation duties being absorbed by that staff group because we've lost several positions, our open hours, our service levels, and then the terrace area, which is a very complicated area. So we're going to start with library district funding. First of all, I wanted to show you the library districts in Oregon. The orange highlighted piece there is our library district. Right now, we have a permanent tax rate of 39 cents on the dollar per $1,000 of assessed property value. Everything you see in yellow and the green as well for Multnomah County, those are all the tax rates that are higher than ours. And that makes a really big difference, especially when our county just continues to grow. As you can see on this document here, Clackamas County has a little bit over 422,000 people in our population service areas. And Multnomah County has about twice that, and they have almost two to three times the tax rate. So they are able to provide a lot more services than we are. And I am positive that more and more people are going to need to be using the libraries in the future for many different reasons, just having to do with the changes coming down the line. So I'm going to go over this briefly because it's confusing, but also I think it's a really important part of this conversation. Like I said, the permanent tax rate is 39 cents on the dollar per $1,000 of assessed value. That rate was established in 2008. It was not enough then, so you can only imagine how little it covers now. Obviously, you know, I've had many people ask me, why didn't you ask for more in 2008? And one, I could say, I wasn't here. And two, obviously, this is being voted on by our community members. And so we needed to make sure that there was a specific rate that would pass, and that was the best that they came up with.
It was 2008.
Yes, 2008. It was about two to three weeks before the recession, is what I was told. So it was really lucky that it passed, but it's not enough. So basically, funds are distributed to the library cities per a formula defined by the Intergovernmental Agreement, or IGA. And there's two components to the formula. There's the city assessed value component and the unincorporated population served component. Now, I'm not going to go through this at all, but I want you to see that there is a formula involved with how much each of the libraries get. The majority of the funding, all the libraries get from the library district actually comes from the first distribution we get. I'm showing you the second one right now. But there's a lot of pieces involved. Like I said, there's the assessed value and there's the unincorporated part. And then because we have certain areas of this county that kind of bleed into other areas, we also have to take that into account as well. So the purpose of the library district funds is to provide a dedicated, stable funding source for the support of library services. And the formation of the district should provide sufficient funding to raise the service levels at all library facilities to the most basic threshold level recommended by the Oregon Library Association. I'm going to go through those standards in a little bit, a couple of slides in the future. But one of the things that I'm, I'm trying to talk about today especially is the fact that it's getting harder and harder to meet those standards, and those standards are minimum standards. And obviously, we would like to do even more than the minimum standards. So another piece of this equation, district funds, it says in the IGA, "District funds may not be used to support general overhead or administrative costs of cities except to the extent to such overhead or administrative costs are directly related to library services or the operation of the library." And so basically, what some people have interpreted this to mean is that allocated costs or internal charges for a city should be coming from the city itself, not the library district. However, other people have interpreted it in a different way, and the language is really unclear. So people just interpret it however they want to interpret it. So that's something that's really difficult to get around as well. So that's all I'm going to tell you about the library district right now. If you ever want me to do a presentation just about the library district and how everything is figured out and the formulas and all that, it would take about five or six hours. And I'd be happy to do it, but good luck to you. Okay, so the next thing we're going to talk about is city contributions, and we'll talk a little bit about the library district contributions as well. So this map up here on the left, this is the library service areas that you see. You'll see Malala, Estacada, Hoodland. They look really big, but that's because they're not as densely populated. Canby, for example, we're somewhere in the middle over there, but we have a lot more, we have a lot more people in our community than some of those other places. So our service areas, that's not just the population of the city that we are in. It also includes the unincorporated folks in our service areas that we also provide services for. And then I did want to just show you on the right-hand side that Venn diagram. Something that's really important for people to understand is that we are a consortium, we're not a branch system. So each library in Clackamas County answers to their own cities, just like I answer to the City of Canby and try to follow all those rules and policies and procedures. But we also have to work with our consortium, libraries in Clackamas County, and I also have to answer to them and also pay charges that they charge us back for as well. So it's a balancing act, and it gets harder every year. But for the most part, there's a lot of overlapping, so it, it can get, it's not as complicated at all times. So, next thing I'm going to show you, this is, this is fiscal year 2324 numbers, and this is coming from a report that all libraries in Oregon have to submit to the state every year. So I want you to pay attention to a couple of different columns here. One, obviously, is the library name column, but two, the population served column, that's the second one. City revenue, which is the third one, and then jump over to the fifth one, district revenue. I'll talk about grants in a second. So this is ranked from most to least revenue. You have Lake Oswego over here with the most revenue, and then you've got Estacada over here at the bottom with the least amount of revenue. If you look at the population served column, Canby is definitely not the lowest as far as population serves goes. We're somewhere in the middle lower area. But one of the things that this has really made apparent to me is that there are major equity issues in the services that we are able to provide as a consortium because each library gets different funds. And so if you think about Lake Oswego, which is the wealthiest city in Oregon, with the highest property values, not only do they get more district funding because those property values are more, but they're also getting a huge chunk of city revenue. They actually. They actually get more revenue from their city than their district, which is just wild to even think about. But if you look at their operating budget, second to last column, $8.5 million, and then the next closest is $3.5 million. And then you get all the way down, and then you get closer to Canby, we're at $1.5 million with some other grant funding in there. It creates major issues. There are certain libraries in our system that are able to provide so many more resources, so many more books, so many more staff, um, open hours because they have more funding. And so one of the issues that we're coming across with this current IGA and this current tax district is the formula and how it really does create inequities. And it's something that we do want to answer in the future. Yeah, so that's the main one I wanted to show you there. And actually, before I go on, I wanted to talk just a second about grant funding. It is drying up. I Amolast Institute of Museum and Library Services is an independent agency of the federal government, um, that helps libraries a lot with grant funds and other resources. And it is in the process of being dismantled right now, um, which has caused a lot of issues. And then just because the federal grant system is really drying up right now, it's also causing effects at the state level, which then is coming back to all the public libraries. And this is just the beginning of this. So I, I'm, I'm very worried about the future of libraries in general. So the next thing I'm going to talk about is rising costs and our collection budget that has pretty much remained the same since 2018, 2019. And I know mayor and councillor Sterns will recognize this slide. I brought it up at the Civic Engagement Academy presentation last month that we did for the library. There is a lot, a lot of folks do not know that we pay for books, first of all, that are in the library. They think they get them, we get them for free, we do not. And everything costs money, obviously. So one of the things I just wanted to briefly touch on was, um, how much it costs to get copies of a book for our community. Kristen Hannah's The Women book, for example, was very popular last year. And so we ended up having to buy seven hardcover copies, three large prints, one audiobook, and then a couple other things. And the reason I'm pointing this out is because our collection, our city of Canby collection is a reflection of this community. Our goal with our collection is to build a collection that is focused on what our community wants and what they need and what they ask for. And so one of the things that we do when we're purchasing books is we look at something called a PAR report, also called a purchase alert report. So every five holds that a Canby patron, Canby community member, um, every five holds from a Canby community member, that means we have to buy one physical copy. So at some point, if you times seven by five, we had thirty, over 35 holds for that one book, um, and other libraries also bought those books as well. So I just wanted to show you this slide really quickly so you understand how much even one copy of something costs. And last fiscal year, we were able to buy about a little over 7,000 items. And that goes down every year because of the increased cost of everything. And then just really quickly to brush up on this too, digital books, ebooks, e-audiobooks, those are even more expensive. And obviously, because they're digital materials, we don't own them, we'll never own them. Every time we buy a license, it is for a short period of time. And so right now, we have this really unique, um, issue that we're coming across, which is a good issue in some ways, but really bad for the budget, is we have a physical collection that is being used very well by this city. And now we also have a digital collection that we also have to pay for and keep up with. And our digital content circulation has doubled since 2019, partially because of COVID when everything was closed. So I just, I'm not going to go over this entire graph with you, I'm going to really focus on e-content, library collection, and then allocated costs. So I wanted to give you a snapshot of pre-COVID numbers, so that's fiscal year 2018, 2019, and then our last year, fiscal year 2324, actuals. So for e-content, we went, we only ended up having to pay a thousand dollars on top of what we were used to paying pre-COVID to last fiscal year, but you can see our checkouts actually went from over 25,000 to 45,000. That's just Canby, that's not link-wide, that's just Canby. And we're budgeting a little bit more because we've had to put more money in that pot as a consortium since we're seeing those large increases. The other thing I wanted to focus on here is the library collection. So our library collection budget has remained stable. We have not really had any more or less. It's an easy area to cut from, but it's an area that is really hard to cut from because this community likes their books and their other items. But you can see that almost $90,000 pre-COVID got us 8,000 items, and last year, it only got us about 7,000 items. A thousand items less a year is a really big deal for us, especially when Canby loves their physical items. And pre-COVID, we were at about 257,000 checkouts. Once COVID happened, it dipped really far, and now we're almost back up to that pre-COVID number, and I expect to get back to that pre-COVID number pretty, pretty soon here. And next fiscal year, and you'll see this in the Budget Committee packet, but next fiscal year, I'm asking for the same amount. I don't want to cut from there, I'm cutting from other places when I can, um, but it's a really big deal, especially for this community because they really like physical resources. The last thing I want to point out on this slide is the allocated costs or the internal charges. For facilities, pre-COVID, we were about $56,000. This current fiscal year, it jumped up to $115,000. Just something that I, I want you guys to understand is really hard for a library budget that is not really moving or going up. It is very hard to have those kinds of increases, although I understand that they're necessary. And then tech services as well, I actually, I got a more recent number two days ago. So pre-COVID, it was about $36,000. Next fiscal year, I'm looking at over $100,000, um, in tech services. And it's a really interesting problem. I kind of learned a little bit more about why it jumped up so high today, and that's partially because the way that IT is charged is it goes backwards, so it looks at the amount of tickets you submitted the previous year. And we were submitting a lot of tickets because we had a lot of old tech, old computers. And I mean, everyone in the city was also submitting a lot of tickets, so they weren't, they didn't weigh as much. But now, because we have new, uh, hardware and there's less tickets being submitted because our current IT service provider is doing such a good job, each ticket weighs more, so they each cost a lot more money. So even though we've submitted, I, like, a couple hundred, I think, less, um, just as a library, they cost more now. So that is also something that I'm trying to work out in my mind because it's making things very difficult for my budget. Next thing we'll talk about, I know I'm going kind of fast, um, but I also know you have a really full agenda. So we're going to talk about service standards, our open hours, and our service levels. And one of the things that I wanted to do was compare, um, our library and what our levels are at right now with the Oregon Library Association standards and their minimum threshold levels, um, which is something that is stated in the IGA. That's the reason why the library district exists, is so we can pay to get those levels up to that minimum standard. So here's another chart for you. For staffing, for a population our size, and you have to remember, this is population served, not just the population of the city, so we have over 25,000 people. We should have .35 full-time equivalent for 1,000 people served. This is true if you incorporate our on-call staff. If you do not incorporate our on-call pool of staff, we are actually under that threshold. Director has to have their masters in library science, I do have that. And then also, a fifth of staff have to have their masters in library science. And actually, it's not four of nine now, it's five of nine. We have five masters, um, staff members right now. So it's a, it's a really good, solid group, who knows what they're doing. Materials-wise, we have a very healthy collection, we have about 55,000 items, we're over that standard, so not something I'm worried about there. Something I am worried about is our access and our open hours. The minimum threshold that OLA says for a population our size is 50 hours, we are open 50 hours. We are not open any more than that, any less than that, but the way that things are going and how much things are costing and staffing levels, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to hold that for much longer. So I just want to be honest with you about those things. Now, one of the reasons I wanted to show you these next two slides is because this is coming from the community. So last year, and now every year, in the month of May, we're going to be having an online survey that is out, asking questions for our community to give us feedback about what services that they want and what services they would be fine giving up if we were to add that service. And so one of the things I wanted to show you here, and this is really important about the library collection piece and the fact that we have not been able to increase that budget, is that most of our patrons say that one of their top values for our library is providing library materials. I was really shocked at that, but it also makes a lot of sense to me, knowing how many items we have get checked out each day in this library. Another thing we asked last year, and we didn't ask, do you want us to be open Sundays or more hours, because I was aware that we were not going to be able to do that, we said, do the library open days and hours work for you? And a lot of people said yes, but a lot of people said no. We had quite a few people saying, we wish you were open later in the evening still, um, we wish you were open Sundays, and it's just not possible the way that things are right now. So I just wanted to make you aware of that as well. Because I like to compare us to the other libraries in our county, since it makes more sense than comparing us to other libraries in Oregon that have nothing to do with us. Here is just a quick table to show you a ranking for, uh, most to least open hours. You have Happy Valley at the top with 62 hours, and Sandy Hoodland at the bottom with 38. Canby is closer to the bottom there with 50 hours. Ranking for staff, so most to least, and this is including on-call. Lake Oswego has 33 staff, Gladstone has 4.57 staff, and Canby is again, closer to the bottom, but middle of the bottom. And ranking for total revenue, you've already seen this, but Lake Oswego's at the top, Estacada's at the bottom, and Canby is right in line with where we've been at on the rest of this chart. So I just wanted to show you this because we are meeting those minimum standards, but just barely, and I don't know how much longer we're going to be able to hold that line. All right, we're getting close to the end, I promise. Okay, so now we're going to talk about staffing and burnout and circulation duties. So one of the reasons why I think we're dealing with staffing and burnout issues is because we lost a bilingual librarian position in 2019, and then we lost four part-time library page positions. Library pages are the lowest, um, on the totem pole as far as library jobs go. Their main duty is circulation. It's checking things out, it's checking things in, it's sorting carts, it's shelving. And because we lost those four positions, that was one of the reasons why we had to, uh, stop being open until eight. We had to close earlier because we didn't have those positions, um, to keep us open later. Um, and then we lost our bilingual librarian position as well. And so one of the things that I've been trying to keep tabs on is how many hours our volunteers and now our higher-class staff are, how many hours they're doing these duties now. So last fiscal year, our volunteers, um, as far as circulation duties go, that was the equivalent of .35 FTE, so a third of a staff person. I wish I could hire a third of a staff person, that'd be easy. Picklist hours, picklist is basically the holds list that comes every morning, it's all the stuff that people put on hold that comes to our patrons, and then also goes out to the other library patrons. As far as picklist hours go, that's the equivalent of .4 FTE. And then this year, library staff, the current higher-class library staff, have been tracking their circulation hours, which is how many hours they're doing all of these duties that generally lower-class staff, um, are doing. And so far this year, it is 1,770 hours, which is the equivalent of almost a full-time person. And if you think of 36 hours, it is actually a full-time person. So these circulation duties are adding up to 1.67 FTE. That would help tremendously with the burnout problem and also just getting things checked in and out and shelved in time, which is something that we're really struggling with since all of those library page circulation duties were absorbed by the staff above. And that is a big reason why I've got a burned-out staff who do not have enough time to get their, their work done. And I just wanted to show you this because this is really important. There's nine staff, we're not all full-time, and that nine staff is including me. This is all the people doing all the work back there. And I know a lot of people do not understand what it takes to run a library or what it takes to work in a library or how the system works, but it is a lot of work to get those items out on the shelf or to get, um, digital materials into your hands. It takes a lot of time and effort, and I'm really proud of this staff group because we have been doing so much work with not enough resources. And it's partially library district funding, but it's also partially just a lack of support, um, federally right now, and also just that, the inequity from the city contributions and the library district funding formula. So just to put a little face to something. The very last thing I'm going to talk about, and this is the more complicated piece, so I'm going to try to explain it the best that I can, but also do it fairly quickly, is the caris area. This is a very difficult issue for our library. It is an issue that many library directors in the past before me have had to try to work out and have tried to move the needle in some way, and nothing has happened because it's a very complicated issue. But to summarize, the ca, the caris area, basically, um, all of the funding for anyone who lives in the caris area goes to the Oregon City Public Library. And the funny part about that is caris... Okay, here's a little map. I was going to give you a more formal map that didn't have my hand-drawn X's on it, but there they are.
I like the little pirate map.
But there they are. So you've got Canby on the bottom, you've got Oregon City on the top, and then you've got this big caris area on the right-hand side here. So a majority of the caris area patrons, so people who live in the caris area, they do not go to Oregon City, they come to our library, and we are not getting those funds. And that is a big deal because we could, like, any portion of those funds would be a huge impact on this library and staff and, um, everything that we do here. And so to make matters even more complicated, the caris area is a, is part of the Canby Fire District, um, and it's also a part of the Canby School District. And so one of the things that myself and other past directors have been really trying to fight to get the library district maps to align with the school district and the fire district boundaries. And unfortunately, in the current IGA, this current library district, I don't think that this is going to be able to happen, I don't think this is going to change. LDAC, which is also known as the Library District Advisory Committee, which is a part of the consortium, it's a bunch of different people, um, from all the libraries that get together, their job is to make sure all the libraries are following the IGA. And one of the things that would definitely be their purview would be to look at these boundaries, but unfortunately, they are fighting over other things that I don't think are really moving the needle at all. And at the same time, I think that making sure this fight happens in this current tax district is also probably not, not smart because it's just going to pass the same funding around to different libraries, and it's just going to lead to everybody fighting. So we're hoping that a future successor tax district can not only get a higher tax rate, but can also deal with these boundaries in a way that is fair to our library and not just giving all of those funds to the Oregon City Library. So to recap, a billion things that I just said really quickly. There is long-term sufficiency and sustainability of library funding at stake. Varying city contributions and library district equity issues are creating huge countywide equity issues as far as services go and what we can provide. Everything is rising in cost, physical, digital, our library collection hasn't increased, our service standards are becoming harder to meet, and I don't even mean like by the year, but it's by the month. Staffing and burnout's a real problem, those circulation duties, um, being absorbed by the staff above because we do not have the page position has been very difficult for everyone. I don't think our hours are fully meeting our community's needs. And then finally, that caris area is just a really complicated part of the puzzle. So before I end, I just wanted to, um, maybe give a little more hope here. Our library and libraries in general, we do more than provide books. Yes, I know that that's what everybody likes, especially our Canby community, they love their physical materials, but we do so many other things. And I just wanted to show you that we are on track this current fiscal year to see more than 100,000 library visits, 1,300 room reservations, 53,000 holds filled, 240,000 physical checkouts, 18,000 reference questions, although I think that's actually going to be a lot more right now. We've been helping a lot of people, especially with tax season just being done. And 11,000 program participants. So something just to keep in mind, libraries are centers for learning, connection, and opportunity. We are here to adapt to the needs of our individual communities, which means that we are generally being asked to fill gaps in education, in access to technology, and even basic necessities. So ways to support the library, just because a lot of people have asked me to include this slide in here, and I do think it's important, get a library Get a library card and use it. It means a lot. Follow us on social media. We do a lot of educational posts on library stuff in general, and also just it's a really good place to learn about what's going on in the library and the city. Tell others about what services we provide, especially like all the things on that last slide, which I didn't go through, but there's a lot. Consider donating to our Friends of the Canby Public Library Group. They pay for all of our programming. Every single program is paid for by that group and their fundraising efforts. You can also consider donating to our Library Foundation. They kind of fund bigger projects, like our teen room mural wall that just went up in October. Purchase books at our book garden, which is just inside the library, the Canby Beer Library, or online at Retro Revival. Volunteer. Join a board. We're going to have an open library advisory board seat coming up at the end of June. And then advocate. I'm not going to go through this slide in detail, but libraries in general need everybody's help right now. Please contact your legislator. There's a find-your-legislator tool that you can use to contact, find your correct legislator and contact them. Spread the word. Spread the word about what libraries do for you and what they do for your community. Tell your story. Sign a petition. And then also you have an option to attend meetings and present testimony at the Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners meetings, which right now they are working on some library-related items, so that's really important as well. So just to finish, couple things. Libraries are evidence of public money returned directly to their community as public value. We make concrete economic contributions that well exceed what cities invest in our libraries. And if economic growth is a priority of the city of Canby, our library needs to play a larger role in those efforts. And this starts with investing in the library. And in the end, in the grand scheme of things, and all the funding issues that are coming across the board around many organizations and school districts and libraries, I think our entire budget is going to seem like small potatoes compared to other institutions that make as big of an impact. But I think it's important that you all know this. And I just want to end with the fact that our community, this Canby community relies on our library, and the entire city will feel the impact if we do not invest in the library before it's too late, not after it's too late. So that's the end of my very quick presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But I'm just very grateful that you allowed me to be here to give you this presentation. So thank you for having me.
Thanks, Prisa. There are a couple of questions up here, and I do appreciate you doing this presentation. A couple of us were at the civic engagement group that we have going on, and you did a very similar presentation, and I thought it was worthwhile, especially the, the piece on the costs of materials for the library. And so you definitely delivered more than, in a good way, more than I thought you would. So very, as, as we are entering into a budget season here for the city, some very poignant things to be thoughtful and thinking about. So thank you for coming tonight and doing that, and thank you for the library supporters for being here as well. Counselor Sterns and then Counselor Patton.
I don't know. I had a lot of questions, so I'm debating whether to take it offline or ask it here. Just to be clear, a couple just things that weren't clear about. The, the library district is that, that's well beyond the city boundaries, so the city boundaries are not correlated exactly with the library district boundary?
Yeah, there's a difference between like a city population and a service area. It includes our city population, but also the unincorporated areas, like we have part of Malino.
Yeah, so the tax assessment goes out to everybody that happens to be on one side of a line drawn on a map somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay. The, and if, if there was an increase in the assessment, that would be voted on by those people on those particular side of that line that was drawn sometime. So I guess what I get from here is that you don't have enough money to do what you want to do, which I think that's clear. Are you doing a specific ask to the council, or are we, I know we're getting the budget season, but I've always wondered when people issue questions, is, is there a specific ask right now? As far as, I, I can see we may have control as a city over the allocated costs portion of it. I guess in theory, we have, we could, we could put more money into the city, into the library budget, on budget time. Are you doing a particular ask on that?
My particular ask is going to be for page positions. I did give that to Eileen, so you guys will end up seeing that ask from me during the Budget Committee meetings. I am asking for two part-time pages, not four, two 10-hour pages, and it would be like, I think it was 20, basically $20,000 for a year of two part-time library pages.
So, library pages, you're, I mean roughly 10,000 apiece?
Yes, and this is because they would be 10 hours a week. It's meant as an entry-level position, and also they're not eligible for PERS or really anything else that would come with those things. They have to work under a certain threshold of hours in order to do that and in order... I tried to put forth the best request that would maybe get approved. There's a lot more that the library needs, but right now, my point with this presentation was really just to make you aware of those problems and then to also ask for those, those two page positions. That would make a really big difference.
Okay, I mean, so, so that, I just want to make sure what kind of, what kind of ask was talked about. Well, we can talk about that during budget allocations, but the question came up to me is, so doing the quick math in my head, a full-time page is $40,000, right? 10,000 for 10 hours times 4, 40?
It would be more because of the PERS contribution.
Well, I'm not talking about per, a person, but I'm just talking about hours.
Yeah.
Expanded, assuming there's only 10 hours a week per person.
Right.
Can those be like high school students or things?
Yes.
So that, that could be, you're allowed to hire 16-year-olds or something like that?
Yes. In fact, it's, page positions are generally, because they're entry-level positions and because they're like the lowest pay scale, it's a really good job for a teenager. You get a lot of learning in during that time. Most people do not stay pages, partially just because of the pay scale, and also it's the beginning of kind of working in libraries. So there is a lot of turnover.
Yeah, I assume there would be on that.
Yeah.
The other question, well, I guess some of that could be budgeting issues, but 2008 when the, the first levy was passed, and I assume it's renewed every five years.
No, it's a permanent.
It's a permanent.
It's a permanent.
Just part of why I don't like those.
Yeah.
Ever, I mean, that's, that's been a long time. Has anybody ever thought about changing it from up a little bit more?
That's, that's what we're working on right now link-wide. We have a committee that is working on it link-wide, and the directors are talking about it link-wide. We're currently comparing other tax rates. We're trying to figure out what, what we could ask for, the max amount that we think people would actually approve, and also what we need. But at the same time, because libraries are kind of in a tough spot right now with everything going on, and I don't know if you've even heard about what's going on at WCCLS, it's a mess over there. This would be a really bad time to, to be put on the ballot. And so we're working on that right now. It involves a lot of moving pieces. I anticipate we'll maybe be able to go out for vote if we have support from everyone in five years.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Obviously, you have a maximum that you want, and you have what it is right now, and there's a difference there.
Yeah.
You could ask for less than the maximum, and it would be better.
Yeah.
Than nothing.
Yes.
Better than nothing. I'm, I'm believer in incrementalism. You don't have to go for all or nothing.
Yes.
And so there, I was, sorry, I just wrote down lots of questions as I was typing here as you were, are going on. The, okay, well, I've probably answered most of, I think, what we could do right now, the other kind of comments, but I'm, I'm wondering about, as a possible funding source, user fees and fines. My understanding from your presentation, which, thank you, it was a very great, great presentation, that most of the rooms here are not charged at all. And, and obviously, we don't have to charge a lot, but a little, maybe it's more than nothing. You know, the, even $5 is, is, is a whole lot more than zero.
Yeah.
And so I'm just, thought of that as, as a, a possible funding source, or also, I remember, it's like 10 cents for a late fee that might make it a quarter instead of a dime, you know, I don't know. I don't know if you've talked about those kind of things of increasing revenue as well. So that, that was the ones I had written down, so I'm sure we'll have some more comments once.
As far as the fines and fees go, we just stay in line with what Clackamas County does. We were at 25 cents, and then we ended up going down to 10 cents because it was creating a barrier for people using the library. There are some libraries in our system that are actually in the process of trying to go fine-free because they can do that. And that's also created other inequity issues that are a really big problem, honestly.
Yeah, there's a, but even a late fee, I mean, a late library book has a cost. I mean, more of these $18 books that you'd have to buy. So even though you might say it's inequitable to have somebody pay some money for a late fee, that's, if they're not turning on time, it is costing the system and they are getting a benefit. And so in my mind, it's something just to consider thinking of is that there, it's, keeping a book late is not a zero-sum game, you know? But, but that's maybe a topic for another, another day. But I, I'm thinking purely my accountant mind's going on categories of revenue, categories and that sort of thing. So it's not a judgment call, it's just a thinking of...
Throw them all out at me because I'm writing them all down. We've been looking at absolutely everything that we can and...
But I was thinking, like I say, the, I know renting rooms for different organizations.
Right.
Usually it's like 100 bucks, 150 bucks for a room that would be the size here and have it free. I mean, that's good, but, I mean, I'll take the free, but the, but as far as money, that's a good thing. So, sorry if I'm taking up too much time, I mean, we have a full agenda.
Okay. Counselor Patton?
Yeah, so, oh, button. Thank you very much for the presentation. As you know, I've been a huge supporter of the library for many, many years. And I, I will say, what I find fascinating about your presentation is that even though Lake Oswego is the, the highest funded library when it came to hours of operation, they are actually, what was it, one, two, three, four? They're fifth in line, so they actually are operating seven hours less than many of the libraries that were, are getting significantly less funding. Lake Wilsonville is sixth in funding compared to Lake Oswego's first, so I find that One of the things that, in preparation for this, I kind of looked at the budget numbers that we had for last year, and I see that under, like, resources, there's grants about $4,000. Is that really how much you get in grants?
No, we've already, this year alone, I think it's somewhere between 20 and $30,000 this year and next year. I'm hoping to be around there too, but the, the, everything as far as the grants go, it's all drying up.
Yeah.
I mean, we actually received a check in the mail for a grant, and then the IMLF stuff came out, and so if we would have received that check a week later, we would not have got that grant.
Okay. And as far as like, so I've always understand, the library kind of lives off of its tax increment. And as far as city contributions, you had said that there's the $375,000 that comes from the, from the city's general fund. I would say that, one of the things that, as a city counselor, I, it has been a rub of mine for many years now, the amount of money that is siphoned off of that tax increment for staff, for management staff and building and all that stuff. When this building was built, the, the library bought, brought a million dollars from the district to help build it. And so I always felt that there should be some sort of grace for that contribution. And if I had it within my purview, I would cut that in half or, or get rid of that, even for the pool, because the pool is under a similar situation, but that is what it is. Another thing is the interfund loan that you end up getting. I would love to see you not have to pay that interest back, but again, that is a drum that I've beaten for many years, and it doesn't have a hole in it yet, but we'll get it there. This LDAC board, how are those people appointed to that? Where do they come from?
So the majority of the LDAC members, like the main regular members, it's a member of each of the library advisory boards, so they are actually chosen, elected, I don't know what you want to say. And then there's a couple other people that have been on LDAC in the past that also come to the meetings and are able to contribute, and the meetings just go in circles.
So do we have representation, a direct representative to that? Okay.
Yeah, and the directors also go to those meetings.
Okay.
To try to make things happen. It doesn't really work.
So one of the, one of the questions, and I think this is, this has been kind of batted around, is there's been talk of doing a, a separate taxing district or something like that? So essentially, creating our own taxing district that would overlay what is currently the, the current library district. Is that a thing that other cities have done? Is that allowed? What is that, what does something like that look like?
I have never heard of a different, I've never heard of a city doing that, not that they don't do it. I mean, honestly, districts in general can be really hard to pass depending on what it's for. So I, I have not heard of it, but I can try to look into it and see if that's possible.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to what the rules are about cities or essentially overlaying their own taxing district over like the, the current library district. If, I am a big fan of the city controlling its own destiny, and if there's a possibility of us creating our own taxing district over the area that is not currently being covered by, that, that we are not, that we are covering but not getting funding for, that won't run afoul of still getting the money from the larger district, that would be very interesting to, to explore.
Okay.
Obviously not in the near future, but in, in the future in general.
Okay.
And I know that when the budget, I, I will say that when the budget process comes up, I will be advocating to, if, if there are cuts and stuff, I will be advocating to lessen that blow as much as possible. This 50 hours concerns me. I noticed that there are a few districts that are not at the 50 hours, and I would hate for us to fall into that, into that category. And then with funding starting to get more tight, maybe then those larger districts saying, well, you know, these other districts aren't meeting their needs, so you should like, like penalize them. And so I, I want to make sure that that doesn't happen. I think that just about does it for me.
So I do have two comments that came in regarding this topic, so I will read those real quick. The first one is from, is it Linnea?
Linnea.
Linnea Stormo. She's the Canby High School student liaison to the library board, and her comments are, apart from the obvious usage of loaning out so many books and movies to patrons, the Canby Public Library offers numerous programs and resources that help their community thrive. As a child, I loved visiting the library to attend events like the Reptile Man, Lego Nights, and crafts, which sparked my curiosity and creativity. I always participated in the summer reading program, which helped encourage the love for reading I have today. I can personally attest to the experience of a child's relationship to the library, but my mother nearly always has a pile of checked-out books waiting to be read. She has also utilized the Library of Things, which provides people the use of items that they want or need access to without having, without having to purchase them. Additionally, Canby's library provides the community with access to the, the internet, computers, printers, copy machines, and quiet spaces to study, complete work, or simply just read. They have programs such as the upcoming Biennial Career Fair or the English Classes for Spanish Speakers. All of these services and a multitude of unmentioned ones prove just how necessary the Canby Public Library is to our city. They also cost money, so to ensure that these critical programs are able to stay in place, the library needs all the funding that the city can provide, can possibly put towards it. Thank you. The other comment came in from the library advisory board member, Kristy Smith. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kristy Smith, and I serve on the local library advisory board, but my connection to libraries started long before that. As a child, one of my earliest memories is sitting cross-legged on the carpet during storytime, completely enchanted at the library in my hometown. The library was where I fell in love with reading. Libraries are more than books. They are the heartbeat of rural communities like ours. They offer free internet for job seekers, safe places for people to gather, storytime for children, ESL resources, and lifelines for those who can't afford streaming services, laptops, or even heat during the winter, or AC on a hot summer day. Right now, libraries across the country are facing devastating funding cuts, and our library is feeling the pressure. I am writing to urge you, please do not allow our city to be complicit in the erosion of something so essential... of something so essential. Protecting our library means protecting community resilience, educational opportunity, and civic pride. There are a couple other pieces to this letter as well, and the other letter, so they'll be in the notes for the meeting, so if you'll include those, thank you, Teresa. Okay. Marissa, thank you so much for making that presentation, I appreciate it very much.
All right, thanks for having me.
Next on the agenda is citizen input and community announcements. This is an opportunity for audience members to address the city council on items not on the agenda. If you are intending in person, please complete a testimony card. These are yellow, they're on the back podium there, backed by Jackie Jones. Jackie, raise your hand. Yep, they're right back there. If you'll fill it out and bring it to our city recorder, you will be given three minutes to speak. If you are doing it virtually, please let the city recorder know by 4:30 on the day of our city council meetings. Tonight, I have, well, first off, Laura Hubbard, you're selling your time, thank you. Jackie Jones, you're selling your time as well?
Yes.
There you go. I like you moved. There we go. So then I have Teresa Sassy, Daniel Godfrey, and Matt Weber, all three of you want to come up at the same time, so you guys can do that. And since there's been time sold to you, you have 15 minutes.
Yeah.
The topic is the Street Maintenance Task Force.
I'll start, I'll get this party started here. Mayor Hudson, councilors and staff, my name is Teresa Sassy, business owner and chairman of the Street Maintenance Task Force Committee. We have concerns after watching the last council meeting, which has led us to being here tonight. It has been very clear that a lot of correspondence has gone on between city staff and the task force committee. We have held four meetings and spent a lot of time trying to help and resolve some behind-the-scenes issues with fees. We are here to address the issues at hand and how to move forward in a timely manner. Overall, we want what is best for Camby, and we were asked to be a part of this committee, therefore, opinions should be heavily considered. We asked for finance support to attend the meetings, and were promised they would be there, and they never were. We have questions regarding the formulas, which are still up in the air. Counselor Patton, I believe you have been involved for 18-plus years in this endeavor. Don't you think it is time to check this off your list? And I think it is. And so, I will pass this on to Daniel.
Thank you. Look, the reason why we're so passionate about this, as Counselor Hensley brought up in the last council meeting, is that we were all asked to volunteer to be on this committee. We took it very seriously. We understand that the decisions which this committee is going to make will directly impact not only the residents of Camby, but the business owners of Camby, so we take that very seriously. Unfortunately, given the new developments of this street maintenance fee, the task force is placed in the middle of a very unfortunate situation. We can either turn our heads and move on, or we can ask for accountability and resolution to this. It's the task force's position that we have a moral obligation for not only the citizens of Camby, but for the business owners as well. And so, we've elected to become the voice for them and see this thing through and try and get resolution. So, let's just address the issues at hand. Let's go back and look at how we got here. On November 13th, the task force came up with three recommendations. It was a good, better, best scenario. As all of you know, you've all been included on the emails going back and forth. It was a $7, $10, or $13 price increase for the street maintenance fee that's being applied today. There was a follow-up meeting in December. Mayor Hudson, you were there. Eileen, city administrator was there, the director of public works was there, the chair committee was there, and myself was there. It was in this meeting that it was announced that we learned that there was major flaws with not only the formula being used to collect the revenue for the street maintenance fee, but also how it was being applied. And with the city administrator's own words, she said, "We aren't sure how extensive the problem is. We also discovered the application of the fee to the various non-residential fee accounts has not been consistently applied through the years since 2008. We aren't sure how much revenue has been foregone. We can't trust the total amount of revenue that any increase scenario, 7, 10, 13, would result in. We need to do some internal work to make sure we're suggesting reliable changes in the fee structure." And last, we need to go back and audit the program before we can be competent in making a recommendation. She rescinded all of the recommendations that we had put together from the November 13th meeting, justified, we agreed with her at that time. She pulled those off the table because of the fact of what I just read. We agreed with her. We asked her, "How long is it going to take to get an audit done?" She said, "Two months." We said, "Great, go to work." Four months later, she, there were no audit, for whatever reason, the audit was not completed. Yet, she felt compelled to come before you in the last city council meeting and put forward the recommendations which we suggested, which Counselor Hensley clearly stated were off the table. We rescinded those recommendations for the obvious reasons. How can we move forward with recommendations when the data which we used to make those recommendations was not valid? The system's broken, it's flawed. So how can, on one hand, you say that we're not going to move forward with recommendations, and then when the council presses her to make, you know, a status update, she moves forward with those recommendations? We have issues with that. There needs to be an audit before we can clearly move forward with any recommendations. And I don't know, and I agree with you, Counselor Davis, it's unacceptable that the audit will take until the end of summer to get done. There should be a sense of urgency applied here to get answers to this. This thing has been broken clearly since 2008. We don't know how much revenue has been lost. Isn't there a fiduciary responsibility by the council to see this thing through and to do what's best for the city? I mean, a responsibility to promote financial stability, didn't you all take an oath under those guidelines? I would ask that you all through with that.
He took a lot of what I was going to say, but my main reason for being here tonight is just to explain why we wanted to take back our reasoning for giving you our recommendations because of the misinformation that we made or used to make those recommendations. And, you know, I've gone through, you know, there's, how do we fix it? No one can tell us what the structure is of charging businesses, and I know what mine is, am I business in Camby? And it's based on square footage, trips, and employees. But how are every other business in Camby being charged? We don't know. There's 1,400 plus or minus businesses or business licenses in Camby. Can we audit that right now, in two weeks, a week? It's on every sewer bill, what that person is paying or not paying. A third of this setting here does not pay a street maintenance fee. Sorry to throw you under the bus, but she's never paid it, she's in the city of Camby. So, how much lost revenue is there? We don't know. Maybe a little, maybe a lot, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So our recommendation would have been lower if all of this gets corrected. Or maybe it needs to be higher. We want to finish this thing off. We want it done. Jerry needs it. He wants to make the city look good, and so do we. That's pretty much all I have. Right?
I guess one of my comments also to add, you guys all brought up the audit two weeks ago at your last meeting, and you all kind of agreed on it, but nobody held our city administrator to a timeframe on that. And I'd like to see you guys reconsider that and see if you can expedite an audit so we can get working on this and bring some revenue into the city. And that's our main objective, to make sure everybody's paying. I know that there's another warehouse, another business that built a large warehouse over industrial area, they're not, they have never been charged for that second warehouse that's gone in. So, there's a lot of misfortune here. Thank you.
So, thank you for the three of you, the five of you, for coming tonight and making your comments and for being on the task force. It's a big deal, it's a huge deal. I mean, anytime we sit here, I mean, you just heard about the library piece, and anytime we talk, there's the library, there's streets, there's transit, there's lots of funding pieces that are going on. So, I'm going to make a couple of comments just to clarify a couple of things that were said here. Yes, I agree with you that the formula is flawed. When this was instituted, Camby was one or the first or second city in the state of Oregon to pass a street maintenance fee and gas tax. Now, almost every city in Oregon does that. Is there a better way to skin this cat? There very well might be, and that may mean that we have to take an opportunity to look at that, what are better formulas to use? So, that's something that I think this council needs to consider. The city manager moved it forward, that's on me. That wasn't on the city manager. I asked for that to come to the council and put it in the agenda as an update to the council as to where we were with the street maintenance fee and the street maintenance task force. Those were just the recommendation pieces, my goal, the intent was to update the council and the community on what the task force had worked on. Okay? The rescission of that piece, that's your guys' decision, that's fine. We weren't, we got that email, I think, the day of or whatever, and, you know, that's a conversation for another time, but that's fine. We didn't move forward with those recommendations as a catch-all. It was more of like, here's the numbers that we were thinking about, knowing that, yes, we do have some backtracking to do. And I believe also that Eileen said two weeks ago that it doesn't date back to the very beginning, that it's probably within the last couple of years to take a look at. So, sorry.
That was me.
You said that, sorry. Counselor Patton, who's been living and breathing this for the last 18 years, said that, and so.
But how do we know for sure, Mayor Hudson, if the audit hasn't been completed yet? I mean, how can you realistically say it goes back two or three years? There's been no audit. We really don't know until an audit's been completed. Would you not agree?
That very well may be the case, Daniel, you know? But I'm saying that, you know, in terms of also for staff priorities, it's budget season, and we're talking about having to really sharpen pencils to look at tightening things up, and so where do we put the workload? Taking care of the budget and potential shortfall for next year, or doing an internal audit on that piece? And from what I understand, that there has been some staff that have stepped up to say that they're willing to start working on that audit, is that not the case?
Yes, but the oversight for that is.
Still the finance director.
Still the finance director, and he's working on the budget right now.
I'm not going to get into a bunch of back and forth right now, I appreciate your comments. I know, I saw the emails today about doing another task force meeting. Eileen and I have already discussed that as well and talked about it a little bit with Counselor Patton today at the groundbreaking for the OLCC building. So, yeah, there does need to be another meeting and conversation, so we will get that scheduled as quickly as we can.
I believe that's scheduled for Tuesday already, Brian.
Oh.
I mean, Mayor Hudson, excuse me.
Sorry.
But I will add one more thing. We did ask at the very first meeting, two or three times, I did specifically for finance, for the financial aspect of this to be brought in, and that was never done. It just kept being put off, and so we never did get the answers.
Also, one other thing I'd like to add is that we understand that the formula itself is flawed, we can all agree on that. But there seems to be a general understanding or lack of understanding of that formula. No one can really truly articulate how the formula is being applied, right? We can all agree on that based on the last meeting. We called it out in some of the meetings that we were, you know, that some of the meetings that the task force had, where we asked specifically for the finance department to be on-site so that we could ask specific questions regarding that formula. Isn't there some sort of scope of work, an SOP scope of, you know, some sort of documentation which would help clarify how the form was put together in the first place, how it should be applied, how new businesses coming into the community should be, you know, charged with this fee? Isn't there some history there that we could rely on that would help clarify this formula?
I would suspect that there probably is, I can't confirm that. I mean, there would have to be something in the grand archives that is, you know, the city of Camby, so, you know, obviously, I can't answer that question now. And again, not trying to get into too much back and forth, but I think we have an idea of things that we need to work on for the next meeting, which, and that may be something that I need you as a task force to be flexible on, because you're asking, you know, for those kinds of things in a week's time, and I don't know that that can be delivered in a week's time. So, you know, if that's information you're wanting sooner than later, then, you know, or if it's just a matter of getting together to kind of go, hey, let's get back on the same page, that's totally two different conversations. So, again, thank you all for being here and bringing this up. We do, I do appreciate the work that you're putting into it, I really do, because it is, it is something we need, the roads and streets in Camby are a huge asset that we need to take care of, and this is a way that we've been doing since 2009, Jason, 2008.
Yeah.
And we need to continue to do that, so I do appreciate it, you guys, thank you very much.
Question for you real quick.
Yes, sir.
So, you and I had a conversation about this topic today, and I wasn't sure if this would be a point in time to discuss that and what maybe new steps moving forward could look like. It's your purview.
Right now, at 20 to 9, and still a full slate of ordinances and resolutions, I'm going to say, you know, let's discuss further, you and I, and what that can look like to get council up to speed on your idea.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move into the consent agenda. Anyone make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda that includes the minutes of the March 19th, 2025 work session, the minutes of the April 2nd, 2025 work session and regular meeting, and the approval of the appointment of Member Michelle Bailey to the Bike and Pedestrian Committee with a term ending June 30th, 2027.
Paul?
Thank you. Motion has been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Waterman, feel better, Mr. Malinato, to approve the consent agenda, which include the minutes of the March 19th, 2025 city council work session, the minutes of the April 2nd, 2025 city council work session and regular meeting, and appointment of Member Michelle Bailey to the Bike and Pedestrian Committee with term ending June 30th, 2027. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes 5-0. Next up on the agenda are ordinances and resolutions. The first one tonight is ordinance number 1641, an ordinance authorized in the city administrator to execute a contract with Curran MacLeod Incorporated in the amount of $126,000 for construction phase engineering services for improvements to Northeast 10th Avenue, North Locust Street, or to North Pine and Second Reading. Any new news on that one?
I don't think so, Jerry, is there any?
Other than they're putting sewer pipe in as we speak, so project's going well so far.
Good, and these dry days help out a lot. Perfect.
Yep.
Yes, Counselor Davis.
Ready for a motion?
I am, sir.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1641 authorized in the city administrator to execute a contract with Curran MacLeod Inc. in the amount of $126,000 for construction phase engineering services for improvements on Northeast 10th Avenue from Northeast Locust Street and North Pine Street.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Davis, seconded by Counselor Patton, to move ordinance number 1641 authorized in the city administrator to execute a contract with Curran MacLeod Incorporated in the amount of $126,000.
in the amount of $126,000 for construction phase engineering services for improvements to Northeast 10th Avenue from North Locust Street to North Pine. Roll call, vote.
Councilor Patton?
Aye.
Council President Hensley?
Aye.
Councilor Davis?
Aye.
Councilor Sterns?
Yes.
Councilor Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Next up, item B, ordinance number 1642, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Curran McLeod Incorporated for engineer of record. First reading, Ms. Stein.
Jerry, if you would go ahead and give the staff report for this item, this is a first reading, so.
Hi, Jerry.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Thanks for approving my last Curran McLeod contract. This one here, kind of confusing that we're having these two contracts, but we ended up not knowing who would win the RFP for the engineer of record. So we needed engineering support, that's why we had them before. That kind of makes sense. So we went out for RFP for this. We had a four-person scoring, four crew scoring this. It was a, this is majority for the planning support and public works, like pre-construction meetings, planning stuff, traffic studies and all that. And we, Curran McLeod actually scored the highest on it. They actually merged with some other small firms like Sisal Engineering and DKS Engineering and are providing us some really good support. So this is gonna be super helpful. We worked with Emily and her team with Barry Elsner to put this good contract together so that when we have projects come up, we don't have to go through the RFP process and all this, we can actually get more accurate prices using it, having an engineer on call to do this stuff. So I, I, this is a, this is something that we have to do every so often, and we're done for five years, and if they provide a good service, we could up it for another five years. So this is a, the other thing that I want to let you know on this is this is gonna be more for just the day-to-day stuff. I still continue to plan to do RFPs on the bigger projects that we have time to plan for, just to make sure we're competitive bidding. So, and we're under no obligation to use them. We have a whole list of other on calls that we can use if we feel they're more suited for the situation. So if you guys approve this, we're gonna be really squared away for engineering services and be able to hopefully meet all your needs with, meeting all your council goals over the next few years.
So Jerry, just, just to make sure I've got a grasp of this, so it is, it's Curran McLeod in quotes, meaning, because they were purchased by another company?
Curran McLeod is still Curran McLeod, but they've brought on subs like Sisal Engineering, DKS Engineering. They have a lot of good support that they brought in to provide services.
Okay.
With good hourly rates.
Okay, great. Any questions for Jerry? Yes, Council Patton.
I move to approve ordinance number 1642, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contract for professional services for engineer of record to a second reading on May 7th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made by Council Patton and seconded by Council President Hensley to approve ordinance number 1642, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contract for professional services for engineer of record to a second reading on May 7th, 2025. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none there. That passes 5-0.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Jerry. It's good to see you, sir.
Good to see you.
Next up is Consider Resolution Number 1426, a resolution amending the cable television franchise agreement between the state of Cambie and WAVE Division 7 LLC DBA Astound.
And Emily's gonna handle this one.
Great.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna talk to you about the good work that Maya and another attorney named Nancy did to get this franchise agreement amendment ready for council tonight. So I'll just say, and to explain why there's another lawyer involved, telecom law, which is, this involves, is a very complex specialized law with a lot of moving parts at the state, federal, local level. But, you know, it's not something, you're, something you really want a specialist in. So that specialist is an attorney named Nancy Warner. She has, she was on call to do work for the city prior to bringing her on to this amendment. She actually used to work for my firm. She's since moved on to specialize 100% telecom stuff, and she's really good. So my firm's recommendation is whenever a telecoms project comes up, we send it out to specialists who can do a better job for much less time than we can. So Maya and Nancy worked together to put together this amendment. And what the background on this franchise agreement is that some form of this agreement has been in place since 99. Some form of this agreement between some predecessor to the current company on the other side, a company named Astound, and Astound is a telecoms company that offers TV, phone, cable services within Cambie. And so what this agreement does is allows Astound to place its cable systems, the systems it uses to provide cable service within the city's ride of ways. And in exchange, the city gets 5% of Astound's gross revenue from providing those cable services. And we're here today because the, the previous iteration of this agreement actually expired in 2020. But the parties continue to comply with the expired terms until present day, which is great, but not a super stable situation that we want to continue. So Astound reached out to propose a 10-year extension to the agreement that expired in 2020, which is retroactive to 2020. So it would expire in 2030. We're in 2025. Five more years left in the proposed 10-year extension. So what this amendment does is, really the material term is just that 10-year extension. As part of Nancy's process, she reviewed the underlying contract language, and then through communications with Maya, it was determined that the underlying contract language is working just fine. No necessary improvements. It's a stable situation. And so the recommendation was just to move forward with a simple amendment. And that's what we have for you today.
Emily, thank you very much, because I, we was talking with Eileen about this, it always, I know enough about the telecom franchise stuff just being here, but it's about less than like my pinky to my tip to the first knuckle.
Yeah.
And because it changes, and so my concern with wanting an adjustment, a 10-year adjustment, was that means, that tells me that there's something coming within the telecom world that is gonna create a shift, and we're gonna be left shorthanded. But to hear you say that it's actually, we're five years into the 10-year extension already, that makes me feel a little bit better, so thank, it's good to hear that piece.
Yeah.
My other concern is, we trigger something with Astound, we're gonna trigger something with DirectLink. And do we know where that, where we're at with that contract sequence?
Does DirectLink also provide cable services?
Yes.
Same kind of services. So I'm not familiar with that contract.
Good.
It very well could, and reading through correspondence with Maya, there is language in the underlying Astound contract that you would be amending through this resolution that might require some level of parity with this other franchise provider. The read on the situation, from what I can tell, is that it's not a very high risk. And you mentioned the concern with the 10-year period, meaning that you're locked into something that might not, might become unfavorable over the next period of time.
Correct.
The original contract was 12 years long, and the subsequent amendments were like, so, so actually, the 12-year expired before people noticed as well, back then, from what I can tell in the contracts. And so the, the amendments, the first amendment following the 12-year was also partially retroactive. So this has been very stable and in place for a long time. And as far as we can tell, there hasn't been any conflict with this other provider that you've seen. But I am happy to look more into that concern for you, if you would like.
I, I just, again, I put it out there in thoughts, I mean,
Yeah.
generally where one, one goes, the other one goes.
Yeah.
And they want similar.
Well, it would depend on the term of that, that other agreement. So I can figure, I can go figure out what that would be and bring that information back to council if you're interested.
I, at this point, would say I'm good with waiting until we absolutely have to.
Okay.
In my, in my opinion now, I mean.
DirectLink only does telephone and internet now. I don't know if that matters.
So they don't.
So this would only apply to cable providers?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Council Patton.
So this seems to be an occurring issue that these things get missed. Is there some sort of contraption that we can rig up somewhere in City Hall where there's like bowling balls above the ceiling that unhook after five years and fall out, and it's like, oh, we need to look at this contract because this thing has fallen from the ceiling? I, I don't know how else we like, figure out how to keep on top of this stuff. With changes in staff and all of this thing, it just, it's insane.
Well, I guess the question on that is, is that us to monitor? Or is that on the franchisee?
It's on both parties, because both parties have obligations under the agreement and risks that they run if the other party does not comply with obligations. So I, you know, maybe a contract would assign specific duties to one party over the other, but out of a sense of knowing what your obligations are and your risks, everyone should keep an eye on termination stuff. I know there are tickle systems that are in place that I wouldn't, I don't have suggestions on software for that, but, you know, and maybe the word tickle is. That's what we call it in my world, is tickle.
Any other comments? Or, yes, Council Davis.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to, I make a recommendation that we table this until we make sure that we know the impacts of DirectLink as well. I, I need more information on this.
Okay. So you're talking about not passing this right now?
Just table it until we get the answers on, on DirectLink, since Emily doesn't have the information on the impacts of that.
Could we table it to the next meeting, like put an actual date on it?
Yeah.
We can track that down by then, two weeks out, yeah.
Is that?
That's time with me.
Okay, so I guess we'll table, table this item C till the next meeting. Okay. Great. Thank you, everyone. Then we're gonna move on to Resolution Number 1427, a resolution adopting the communication plan.
So council, this is one of your, your priorities for this fiscal year, for your goals. And Jamie has been doing a lot of work on this plan, and it is finally ready for presentation to you. And it accomplishes one of your goals, well, actually accomplishes about three of them, because it folded in various, various aspects of other goals that you had, so.
Great. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jamie Stickel. I am the Director of Communication, or Director of Economic Development and Communication Specialist, but tonight I have my Communication Specialist hat on. This plan before you and resolution is something I'm, as Eileen said, I have spent a lot of time with, and it's been a very fun process. I've been the Communication Specialist since 2021, when we had the ice storm and realized that we don't really have a great avenue for getting information out to the community. And I am kind of uniquely positioned in the sense that, for once, my, my bachelor's degree has paid off. I have a bachelor's degree in communications with a minor in English, and then a master's in business administration. So I've applied all of that to this, to this plan. In the interest of time, I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I had sent out to you all. Obviously, the, the communications plan itself was in the packet. Do you want me to go through that presentation, or would you like me to kind of hit some of the higher notes? I'm fine either way, I just.
I would like to see it.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So, as the city administrator noted, this fits your goal, enhance engagement and communications that represent broad perspectives. There were also two other sub-goals in the 2024 goals and objectives, which were about youth engagement and then making sure that we are reaching all of our diverse population. The plan included research into other communities' communications plans, collaboration with other communications staff, the city of Independence, for example, and then input from city staff. So it was sent out to the leadership team. It was a few key, excuse me, a few key stakeholders who routinely communicate with the, the community at large, like the planning manager and Tyler, who works in the economic development office, received this plan to, to review and make sure that we were kind of checking all of the marks and making sure we're putting something together that's cohesive and thorough. And the plan aims to foster clear, transparent, effective communication with staff, community, and then stakeholders at large. The mission is to enhance internal collaboration, strengthen external relationships, and ensure timely, accurate information is disseminated to all. So first, I'll start with the objectives, which will provide the kind of clear direction and internal, for internal and external needs. So enhance the clarity, consistency, and accessibility of information among staff. This would include regular updates from the leadership team on key policies, initiatives, and departmental activities. Foster an engaged, collaborative, and informed work environment. And so this is really about open communication, providing staff with resources and opportunities so that they can engage with each other, and then also on cross-departmental efforts. Strengthen transparency and build public trust through clear, honest communication. So this could mean something as, you know, as far as translation and interpretation services, but also publishing reports and progress updates, and that could include new initiatives, of course. We're really great about talking about our new initiatives, hence, hence why we're here tonight. But also talking about things that are underway or have been underway for a long time. We forget, because we spend so much time with it, and you spend so much time with it, that the community at large doesn't always have the information on street maintenance fee, for example. So, so really trying to sing, sing the good song about what's going on. And then increase community engagement and participation in city of Cambie activities. And that would include building on successful initiatives, such as the library activities, which they have for all ages, you know, the teen room, children's activities, seasonal and entry-level jobs, economic development events, police engagement with youth, with youth and the community at large, and then Cambie area transit outreach. Those are just a few of the ways that we reach out to the community, but how do we continue to increase those efforts and build on them? Then there are key roles and responsibilities, which provide a foundation for the effort and manages expectations through, within the organization. And so these are just some of the key roles that were outlined, and there's more information. So for instance, the city administrator would be the person who would speak on major initiatives. Communication specialist helps to put out information, and in the event there's an emergency, I would also serve as the public information officer. Leadership team and subject matter experts, obviously, they would be providing information in various ways. As far as emergency management goes, we just completed the emergency operations plan. The police chief would serve as that for our city. Information technology coordinator, so that's as far as making sure that people who work at the city with varying roles have up-to-date phones and emails, email access. And then also all of you, Mayor and Council. And one of the things that I tried to include was that, for instance, Mayor and Council, you might be out in the community hearing from the public, and that you would give that information to the city administrator, and then she would then filter that information down. So it really helps to make sure that everybody knows what your role is and how the process should work. As far as key audiences are concerned, this is how we address specific needs for all the stakeholders while fostering relationships within the organization and across all sectors. So it focuses on internal and external communications. As far as internal goes, obviously, Mayor and Council, you are part of our internal communications. And then the city employees across all departments and levels. Sometimes we talk to our peers or people who are the nearest to our, our efforts, but really making sure that somebody, you know, in transit knows about what's going on in swim so that we can all help to collaborate and, and promote the good work that's happening. You know, for Mayor and Council, this would include timely and comprehensive communications so that we can help you support decision-making and collaboration. Tailored briefings, which a lot of this happens already naturally, but we're trying to make sure that we have it in one plan. So those briefings might happen via email, work sessions, updates to the city council priority document. And it acknowledges that everyone should be following those appropriate channels of communication. And then also the city employees across all department levels, recognizing that we need to make sure that timely information is provided and that it is consistent and that people know where to go should they have questions. As far as external communications go, the residents of Cambie deserve to have communication that's transparent, but also targeted to specific demographics. Local businesses and community organizations, you know, speaking with them and highlighting engagement activities or opportunities, funding opportunities. And then ongoing relationships with media outlets, whether that's, you know, the Herald Pioneer or, or others, or even regional and state government agencies. For strategy. Uh, excuse me, for strategy, we have specific actions to ensure clarity and measurable outcomes and emphasize consistency, accountability, and responsiveness in internal and external communications. So for internal communications, um, you know, the regular updates and announcements would include a structured communication schedule. For instance, we would have an internal calendar that would list things like the city's business and tourism newsletter, which goes out on a weekly basis, but it would also include the, the first Friday memo and, and maybe delivery dates for those kinds of things. Leveraging multiple communications channels, so that's everything from social media, um, to emails, flyers, updates to the garden, which the garden is a, is a Intranet, so it's for city staff-specific. Um, and then timely communication, um, especially if there's a change in policy, a change in direction, or, or something new that, that we would want to make sure that everybody would know. Training and development, um, you know, enhancing communication skills through workshops, webinars, team building. So if you enhance the team, you can enhance the collaboration. People who work, you know each other better, work better together. Um, ongoing skill development, which could be on, online resources, training, updates to that garden that I referenced previously, and, and regular assessment for our communication evaluation. For feedback mechanisms, um, excuse me, for feedback mechanisms, establishing multiple feedback channels, so that could be anything from a suggestion box or a confidential way that people could submit information. Acting on feedback promptly and regular feedback loops, and that could vary. So for instance, departments could, um, talk with their staff about how the communication's going and how they feel that the process and communications plan has been implemented on a quarterly basis and maybe the city, um, evaluates the assessment on a yearly basis. Um, cross-department collaboration, so facilitating, uh, joint projects and initiatives, and that could be a task force or anything to, um, some of our local events that we do. Um, project and event management, so, um, as part of the addendum, I created a template, which was an idea that was actually shared by Ryan Potter, that would help with community events such as, um, town halls or community summits to really help to make sure that who, regardless of who is at the helm of those, that the efforts are streamlined and consistent. Um, and then encourage knowledge sharing, so sharing work plans or access to digital, digital resources. Um, and then I'll obviously, uh, sorry. Sorry. Um, and then recognition for collaboration. There we go. Uh, for transparency initiatives, um, publishing comprehensive reports and updates, leveraging multi-channel dissemination, so websites, social media, local media. Um, the library has a community bulletin board that is probably underutilized as far as even city resources go, but probably community as well. Um, and then regularly sharing with key community groups to make sure that people who are engaging with the community in various ways also know the efforts that the city has underway. Um, and then transparency in the decision-making. For community engagement, um, hosting regular public forums and town halls, creating structured communication schedule, utilizing survey and feedback tools, implementing student board and committee membership. A couple of our boards and committees have members, uh, uh, seats already, but, um, opening that up to all boards and committees. And then inclusive, um, engagement practices, which would include, um, interpretation and translation, like I mentioned previously, but also holding meetings at varying times and varying locations to try and make sure that people feel welcome or that if they, you know, don't necessarily work a nine to five, that they can still attend. And that also includes coordinating with local nonprofits and faith-based groups where people are comfortable receiving trusted care and, and communication. So having our, our local nonprofits, you know, the Canby Center is a great, great example, or, or the Adult Center, where people are used to getting information, making sure that we're sharing so that they can feel like we're able to, uh, strengthen that story. Then for, um, media relations, cultivating strong media relationships, designate a spokesperson. So again, for a lot of efforts at the city, it would be the Communication Specialist as it is now, but it could be that for, you know, the police department, that they identify somebody who's going to speak for them or do their social media. Um, and then proactive media outreach. For digital presence, presence, maintaining an active social media presence, um, and the city actually has several. So we have the City of Canby Facebook page and Instagram, but we also have Canby Business, Canby Library, Canby Area Transit. The PD has a, a social media page as well as, um, the Swim Center. So maintaining those in an active way and also making sure that people are aware that there are more than one avenue to get information. Website usability and accessibility, and then engaging website feedback. As far as emergency, uh, communications go, as I mentioned, we have the emergency operations plan that was adopted in 2024. So in case of, of an emergency, it would be to initiate and follow that emergency operations plan. Um, and communications actually serves as an emergency support function, um, in, in that avenue. Implementation and evaluation, so this identifies actions required with a focus on measurable outcomes, continuous improvement, and stakeholder involvement. And this is something that the leadership team will be focusing on because it will be about timeline and, and gathering together what our resources are, what our, um, what our accessibilities are and, and making sure that we're all aware and able to, um, partner and also under, have a good understanding. So a phased rollout of the communications plan, which kicks off tonight with the resolution that, um, you will be voting on. Um, and then training and onboarding to ensure staff is aware and knowledgeable. Um, stakeholder communication, so people know that we have a communications plan and we would welcome the community's feedback on that. Performance metrics, so monitor engagement metrics such as social media and website and then revisit every six months. So we could get a baseline now of, of how many people visit the city's website. And then in six months, after trying efforts to further those, that engagement and the use, see where we're at and see if we can continue to move the needle. Um, conduct surveys and feedback sessions, both internally and externally. Analyze media coverage, you know, having a, having that, um, ongoing, uh, communications calendar will allow for city staff across all levels to say, this is what we've done and this is what we're doing and, and really be able to measure, um, how much media coverage we are receiving, whether that's locally or even on a regional level. And then continuous improvement. Annual review and plan update. Monitor industry trends and technological advancements. Adapt strategies based on feedback and trends. Stakeholder involvement in the improvement process. Again, this was something that might have been created by one person but has already had feedback from others and we want the community and, and our, you know, all of our staff to take a look and, and say, this is how we'd like to see it used in the, in the future. And then, um, again, stakeholder improvement on that process, having some sort of formal process. For the budget considerations, um, it's a comprehensive approach to ongoing engagement while prioritizing high-impact areas and utilizing cost-effective tools. So we've never really had a citywide communications effort. So this year, especially with budget considerations, um, at the top of our, our forethinking, um, you know, really starting to understand what we have and how we should be using it. So, you know, use this as a baseline in what departments are, have communications budgets. They're often parts of projects or part of, um, you know, events, for example. So really identifying what is communications as a whole and, and what we need in the future. Staff training and development, um, and that training could be understanding how to update the website in each department so that we have a more updated website with more useful information. Um, again, investments in technology, promotional materials and community outreach, and then identifying event and meeting costs. Um, and in this scenario, event, I mean, again, like town halls, not so much like the Independence Day celebration. Seek cost-effective solutions for communication tools, um, and platforms, so explore tools with scalable solutions. For example, for that newsletter that, um, I referenced, the, the business and tourism newsletter, that goes out on a weekly basis. If for some reason the library decided that they also wanted to send a newsletter using that same program, then we could scale how many people receive that, um, how many people are signed up to receive that newsletter or how many we're sending out. Um, and it's a program called Constant Contact. So it's scalable, so we're not having 10 individual, um, subscriptions, but rather one that fits all of our needs. Staff training and, oh, I'm sorry. But maximize the use of existing resources, including leveraging tools to optimize reach. Um, partnerships and sponsorships. So that could be local, external stakeholders. Um, and that can be something as simple as cooperative marketing where, you know, the, a great example is several years ago, um, Canby, or Active Media, so Canby Advantage, they did the Discover Canby, um, booklet and the city had several different, um, advertisements or appearances in there, but that also local businesses and nonprofits did as well. Monitor and adjust based on effectiveness and results. So tracking the expenditures and performance, that's something that we're going to be focused on this next year. Prioritize high-impact initiatives and then, then we'll consider future budgeting needs. And so in conclusion, um, by implementing the comprehensive communications plan, the City of Canby aims to foster, um, stronger, more meaningful relationships with both internal stakeholders and the broader community. And, um, the communications plan will serve as a roadmap that will guide the city, but it is again, something that we want to be adaptable so that we can make sure that we're serving the needs, not just today, but in six months, in six years, maybe in 60 years, who knows? Um, this is the addendum, so the things that will be included, including the, the goals and objectives, the emergency operations plan, the library strategic plan, um, the City of Canby social media strategy, electronic communications policy, a style guide, which will include, um, not just the logo, but for instance, the Dahlia that appears in the corner of all of the slides, um, you know, an idea of exactly what colors match the city's branding that we've put together so that everybody has access to that at, at the internal level and is able to utilize that to make sure that we're putting out our, our best foot with branding. And then that project and event management template that I, um, had, uh, mentioned earlier. So I, I talked very fast to try and make sure that I would lessen the impact on your night, um, but I would open it up to any questions that you would have.
Jamie, thank you.
Thank you.
And you did, and I, I appreciate you being considered or, yeah, considering our time, but you know, again, this is something that you've been working on and, and we've been asking for. So, um, thank you for, for the presentation and, and trying to get through it quickly. The, so my couple of questions are, so do we have a dollar figure yet on what, um, potential budget impacts that would have to implement this plan?
I don't think that, especially in the first year, that there would be any budget impacts. I think that the first year, um, would be about having our leadership team and their staff identify the ways that communications falls into their budget. So for example, economic development, you know, we might be doing certain things that are event-related, but we might be doing other, you know, more general marketing things. Maybe that's something that gets folded into a budget. But this year, you know, the Constant Contact subscription would be a great example, or Survey Monkey. Um, starting to identify what we have, what we need, um, and, and where there's overlap because I'm sure, I'm sure that there is, uh, there has to be. Um, and so as it stands today, there's no, there's not going to be a budget ask as it relates to the communications plan. Um, we want to be obviously very thoughtful about the budget overall, but I don't think that we have a great sense of exactly all of the ways that we could be, um, leveraging our resources. And so that's what the first year is about.
The second question I have is, uh, any metrics discussed on, I guess, measuring the level of engagement? I don't want to say, again, I had this conversation at work the other day, it's like, you know, we can put out seven different newsletters or communication pieces and you're still going to have people that are going to come to you and go, well, I didn't know that.
Of course.
You know, and you're like, well, we've ever, you know, we've done all that we, we can, I can't add an eighth one because it makes no sense in doing that, right? So, but there is a way to measure the engagement piece on what we do currently versus where we want to go with it. Are, have you been looking at those as well?
Well, so I think that's one of the things that I had noted that the leadership team is going to need to do. So rather than me audit all of the ways that we are engaging with the community and the metrics around that, bringing everyone together, you know, having a meeting where everybody whose department has a social media page and acknowledging this is how it's used, this is what the numbers are, the website, for example, um, you know, bringing, having a conversation with IT. And so that is going to be something that the leader, the leadership team is going to need to be charged with so that we can identify those. Um, and so the hope was that first adopt the plan, then identify those metrics and then be able to, uh, reassess them on an ongoing basis such as every six months.
My last question, uh, because I just saw hands go up, um, is regarding...
The thing.
The thing that just left my brain.
Oh, that thing.
Yeah, that thing. Okay, I'll move on.
That was the easiest question of the night.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Um, did you have a question for Jamie on this?
Yes. Jamie, thank you for the presentation. I think it's a, it's a great start. The only question I'd have is, you know, uh, time commitment for this. I mean, we, we need to start with when somebody sends a question into the city and gets answered, you know? And so somebody's got to do that, right?
Right.
Is that you?
When somebody submits a question to the city, do you mean about this plan specifically?
No.
Or just in general?
Just in general.
Um, so I think that those are sent to you directly. Yeah, so they're sent to the city administrator and then either she would respond or she would then, um, task a director and staff, and/or staff person to reach out. So for instance, if, uh, I know Parks is near and dear to your heart. So if somebody said, how do I reserve Wake Park and reached out at the general level, it would go to the city administrator and I'm sure she would kick that over to Emily Sassy, who oversees those reservations.
Okay, right, okay. I just wanted to make sure that questions are being answered. The, uh, I'm more concerned about the time commitment, your time commitment, because, you know, prioritizing economic development and bringing hotels, motels, and athletic fields and into the city to me is more important than a communicate, you're taking time for you to do a communications plan. You know, I think it's a good start, but it's like an emergency management plan. If you don't exercise it and you don't use it, it's no good. So I don't want to have a plan and know we don't have the people to staff that plan.
It's an excellent point, Counselor. You know, um, the goal was to develop the communications plan, um, and so we've gotten that done, but this is, you know, we, we're capturing what we are already doing, but this plan could go all the way to establishing a public information officer or a, you know, a special program in communications. That's how, um, I just keep thinking of an accordion. That's how, that's how extended this, this plan could become and the, and the function could become. So, um, you know, I don't know that we have the budget this year to, um, incorporate a public information officer into the, um, into the program, um, into the staff of the city, um, but that's eventually where I see this plan taking us.
Counselor Sterns?
Well, um, I, um, I'm looking at the City of Canby website and there's section news and announcements and I see news from May 12th, 2023 is the most recent news item. And so I'm curious, if the plan to create some sort of bulletin board or something of things going on. Um, I know that when there's street closures, we get an email, but I don't know, am I supposed to share it with all my friends, but that's like two people.
Well, I will, I'll say a couple of things. One, we had a City of Canby employee who was updating that slide and they left the city. And so more information has gone out than just that. Um, on specifically bigger items, um, you guys would receive, uh, an email usually from me that says, here's a news release that's gone out. If it was an event or, um, a community gathering, usually what I try and do is I say, here is a graphic that you could share on social media, if you're on social media. Here is a PDF that you could forward to your friends and family to try and make it as easy as possible and streamlined as possible and, um...
Yeah, kind of looking for a central repository of all those things that you are sending out, that we can go to a page, the same page every time and say, hey, these are all the things going on. And of course they'll staledate pretty quickly, but that's how news is. But, um, it's kind of odd that when something's going around in Canby, like before I was on, so you guys know I got a little more information, but I just always go to the Canby now just to look and see what people are posting. But I think that may be a little bit more reliable source of information that I won't use every day, but I might go and look and say, okay, here are the, the announcements and the news, um, for the day. And so that's kind of, I'm glad you're having this plan to do it, but I think, and that was one of the things I was... was one of the things I was going to try to work, now that you've done such a good job with the Citizens Engagement Academy, that's the problem with doing a good job is that people ask you to do other good jobs afterwards. But that was one of the things I want to focus on is being able to, because even though it does cost money to have a public information officer, it also sometimes costs money not to have a public information officer. And I could say to my clients oftentimes, often the free tax prep is the most expensive choice that you made. And it turns out to be the case often, and so even though it may be a question of budget shuffling, it may end up being a net cost-saving to have clear, consistent, easily accessible means of communicating with the citizens.
Absolutely.
So I'd just like to commend you for the work you've done and ask you to do more work.
Thank you.
Counselor Patton?
Yeah, I just wanted to also take that opportunity to thank you for the amount of effort and stuff you put into this. It is a very comprehensive document and I look forward to it becoming something that we build upon for the future.
Thank you, thank you. And part of it is revisiting things like that where we have a gap where somebody left, those updates aren't happening, how do we backfill, how do we, you know, have somebody new engaging in that way? The website especially, I think there's a lot of room for growth that might not take my time, it might take a little bit of my time here and a little bit of somebody else's time there, and that the lift can happen comprehensively. And that I think that, should you choose to adopt this resolution this evening, that then it helps to also bring the awareness to all city staff that this is a priority and, you know, how are the ways that each department can do better to increase that information on the website and social media and other avenues as well.
Yes, Counselor Patton?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 1427, a resolution adopting the communications plan for the City of Canby.
Second.
Did you get that?
Second. I'll start with that, you Paul?
Yeah.
We'll give it to him.
Motion made by Counselor Patton, second by Counselor Waterman to approve Resolution 1427, a resolution adopting the communications plan for the City of Canby. Discussion.
Yes. Obviously speaking, I won't be voting yes on this, and the reason I won't be voting yes on this is I think that it's a great plan, but I think it's preapproving a budget amount until we actually see the budget and get into this budget process. And we know funds are going to be tight, and I don't want to have a plan out there that we can't adequately staff to do the job.
Yes, Counselor Waterman, discussion item?
So I think, I appreciate you mentioning that we have resources right now that we can leverage that we're already paying for. And I think that's the big key of organizing this, to make sure that we're utilizing what we're currently already paying for, website, social media, and actually maybe even saving money by consolidating different, you don't have the shadow IT, multiple accounts out there because somebody didn't know that we already had an account. We can combine those and actually save some money. So I think, like you said, it's a plan, it's not anything that we're going to spend more money on or anything like that. I think it would still be discussed before we would do that. So, thanks.
Any other discussion items? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries for one.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jamie, appreciate it. Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 1428, a resolution adopting Canby Area Transit 2025 Americans with Disabilities Plan. And our transit team is here.
Todd Wood, Transit Director, Heidi Muller, Transit Manager. We're actually, we have four resolutions on here, so we're just going to hit them all at once real quick. They're all roughly the same thing. For those of you who have been on the council for a while, this is an old hat. As a recipient of federal and state funds, we are required to have plans that meet certain federal and state requirements on how we will operate our dialerite services and other services with regards to things such as the American Disabilities Act, Title VI, also how we'll maintain our vehicles and our buildings that are federally or state-funded, and of course, anybody who has a CDL in the City of Canby is subject to a drug and alcohol policy. The FTA has very specific requirements. So each of these plans are a requirement of the federal and state government. We are required to update them periodically with new federal and state language or any changes that have occurred in those areas. For instance, with the ADA plan, we used to be a curb-to-curb service, now we're a door-to-door service because that is what the ADA, the federal ADA says. So we have to make those changes, add those to the plans. Title VI is basically the same, there's some new federal language in there, we have to make some changes to that. The Transit Facilities Maintenance Plan is mostly the same, we have some new buses and some old buses are gone, so those go out, new ones come in. And then the FDA Drug and Alcohol Plan is all about language adoption as far as what they require for drug and alcohol language. Since they are required plans, they have to be adopted by the governing body, that would be you all, so you have to adopt these plans for them to be considered valid by the state and federal government. So if you have any questions about them specifically, happy to answer them, but they really aren't much different, they're a little different, but they're not much different than the previous plans, they're simply just updating the language and any policies that have been given to us. And Heidi and Melody have done yeoman's work to get these things up to date, I really appreciate all their hard work.
So again, thank you both for being here and staying late like this. Again, as you said, it's kind of boilerplate pieces for us, these come to us every year with the updated language because it's, they go through and update that on federal level, then it gets handed down and we've got to handle and make those changes here. So in terms of the ADA plan, there's been nothing...
There's some minor changes in there, some, for instance, we used to require attendance with people who were unable to help themselves on and off the buses. The ADA says you can't do that anymore, you can request, but you can't require. So we also used to have a policy that if you canceled on us repeatedly, that we would not let you ride for a while, and they changed the rules on those. So there's some changes in there that the ADA has brought down on us. Title VI is mostly just language adoption, like you can't say this now, you need to say this, or we've added this. We really have never had a Title VI complaint or a problem here, so...
What would be an example of a Title VI complaint?
Title VI complaint would basically be that we discriminated it against somebody due to civil rights violation. So if we denied somebody because of disabilities, age, race, origin, any of those topics, if we did that, it would go to the state for an investigation. And then we would, if we were found at fault, then we would have to report that for three years, if my memory is correct, on all of our documents.
It also has to be added to the plan, it has to be in the plan. That you got that violation.
It would be labeled...
So you'll notice we have none in there because we never had one. And then the trans facility is basically the same, we just move vehicles. The drug and alcohol is a bit different simply because the language from the FTA has changed. I actually had to use their template generator for their language and then adopt the city's specific language into it, and then it had to be approved by the FTA before it could come to you to be adopted.
Got it, okay. Thank you both, appreciate it.
If we wanted to change it, it would be a big mess.
Yeah.
I don't know, I threw another word in there.
Emily, can these be, do we have to do these all individually?
Can we make a motion that includes all four resolution numbers and vote on them as a slate for the sake of time? Or do we have to read the language of each individual title?
What do your rules require, current rules, if anything at all? I can quickly look.
I don't think we have a rule about it.
Just doing, all right. I was trying to ask a question. Are there any questions for your transit team? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 1428, a resolution adopting Canby Area Transits 2025 Americans with Disabilities ADA Plan.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Hensley, second by Counselor Davis to approve Resolution Number 1428. Question?
Nothing.
Okay, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries five zero, number F.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 1429, a resolution adopting Canby Area Transit 2025 Civil Rights Program, Title VI.
Yep.
Limited English Proficiency Plan and repealing Resolution Number 1297.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion made by Counselor Patton, second by Counselor Waterman to approve Resolution Number 1429 and repealing Resolution Number 1297. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? He wants to make a motion. Great, Item G, Resolution Number 1430.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 1430, a resolution adopting Canby Area Transit 2025 Asset Maintenance Plan for Public Transit Fleet and Facilities and repealing Resolution Number 1304.
Motion made by Counselor Sterns, second by Counselor Patton to consider Resolution 1430 and then repealing Number 1304. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five zero. Item H, Resolution Number 1431.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 1431, a resolution to adopt a revised City of Canby Drug and Alcohol Policy for Use of DOT Regulated Employees, repealing Resolution 1332.
Second. Motion made by Counselor President Hensley, second by Counselor Patton to approve Resolution 1431 and which repeals?
1332.
Who?
1332.
1332. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also carries five zero. Thank you, your documentation is now all updated. Hey, thanks.
Have a good night.
Eileen, you have any old business tonight?
No.
No old business. Any new business?
No.
Look at that, cruising along. Mayor's business, two things. Clackamas County Corning Committee meeting was a couple of weeks ago, and really the big topic of the conversation was the transportation package that's being discussed at the state legislature. At the time, it was very much just framework kinds of things. They're throwing everything and the kitchen sink into what could be a very large transportation funding package, but again, that's going to be towards maintenance and operations, not much in the way of expansion. One of the more interesting one was tax, a sales tax on new tires, where the amount, only about 20% of that tax would go towards transportation, maybe it was 30, the rest of it was going to go to two or three other areas that had nothing to do with transportation, which I thought was really, wildlife and some other things.
Water.
But there's a couple of those in the items that are being thought of in bills and whatnot. I think I've read, it started at 20 and it could be as high as 40 cents a gallon state tax per gallon on gasoline coming our way, so a ton more to come on that and trying to follow it and keep up as best I can. Today was the Oregon, so the OLCC did their official groundbreaking today on their new building out in the industrial park. They've been moving dirt now for a month or so, but today was like the official shovels in the ground, grand, you know, just grand kickoff. So a very nice event, it's going to be a great building, and there was a ton of people there, so it was very, a lot of fun to do that this morning. That's all that I have for now, I'm going to start with Counselor comments, liaison reports. Counselor Waterman, you're first tonight.
Okay, I have a new member being recommended by the BICOPED Committee soon, she attended last week, or it was last week, to just kind of see how things work and seemed to go well. And I don't think I need to follow up on the library board.
I think we got plenty of library stuff tonight, Marissa did a great job. Thank you. Counselor Sterns?
I don't have anything from liaison reports, I just wanted to comment a little bit about the citizen input about the street maintenance thing and the meeting we had last week, so it's kind of the same thing. I just want to say that I'm glad that they did make the public comment, they came up and they said what they needed. I personally think we should move forward on fixing the things we know we need to fix, and the first thing I think everybody agrees on is the formula, it needs to be changed because no one can tell what it is, and so if we don't know what it is, we've got to change it something that we can, that at least my third-grade brain can look at and say, hey, this is how much you're going to pay. Also, I personally would like to get some resolution that ties the funding source to the Consumer Price Index. And then of course, later on, once all the audits and everything are done, we can make a good decision on if any increases are needed. But I don't think that we should wait, need to wait for the whole package to be done before we do anything. We need to probably start with stuff we can agree on and then, or the easy stuff we can agree on, and then do the harder stuff later. I just want to reiterate, I don't want to do all or nothing, I want what we can get done, done.
Okay. Thank you for that feedback, appreciate it. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Park and Rec was a very busy meeting last night. We started at 5:30 and went for a couple hours. We reviewed the Dodds Auburn Playground Equipment, finally resolved that as a committee, the committee did. We looked at the amount of time it's going to take in order for them to break ground on doing the construction on that, and the Public Works Director said around two months by the time it goes through the process and the council process and everything else. So we're looking at two months, maybe a little bit longer until, but with the goal of trying to break ground out there in July. And then spent a great deal of time, and I wanted to thank Don Hardy and Ryan Potter for being at the meeting and the consultant to talk about STCs and STC methodology for Park and Rec, and then of course, the project list moving forward for the comprehensive plan. In other words, they've got to project out 20 years in regards to the projects, and so in order to move that forward, the committee decided to send projects into the chair of the committee, and he's going to put together the list of input from the committee members for council consideration as moves forward to the council. There apparently is a joint meeting on the 21st with the council, I wasn't aware of, that was brought up last night by Ryan Potter.
21st?
Yeah, May 21st, or May 20th, I'm sorry, Park and Rec Committee, or no, the Park and Rec Committee is going to review the list, and then something about a joint meeting, which I wasn't aware of, on the 21st, so we need to check on that. And then another SDC meeting on June 4th. Those were apparently brought up by staff last night at the meeting. Adult centers moving forward, I'll be, I won't, there's not a lot to report on that. On the street maintenance fee, I don't know if there's going to be enough room at the Public Works Meeting Room for that committee meeting, because I know I'm going to be attending to listen to the information on the street maintenance fee. You know, I agree with Councilman Sterns that, you know, we shouldn't be doing anything until we resolve what that formula is, how much is being paid out, because we can't be charging the current business owners an amount and not knowing ones that should be paying, aren't paying, you know? And so I think that that should be a robust discussion, but I, again, I stress the need that if city staff can't do that... that if city staff can't do that audit report, that we get a consultant on board that can do that audit report as soon as possible. Because we are going to lose money. No matter how you look at it, that's going to pay for itself by bringing on a consultant and to do that audit report that was promised to the committee, you know? And they still haven't got it. So I think that that's going to be a robust meeting. And I think that we, I agree, we need to move that forward one way or the other. That's all I have.
Just clarification, Council Sterns, you mean move the audit forward or move forward with some sort of, something added to the?
Well, just to clarify, maybe, I do want the audit done. But I think that the criteria for business has got to change into something comprehensible that anybody can look at. Average citizens don't have to stand on their head to look at it and figure out what, how it is. It's got to be simple, square footage or something that is, that anybody can calculate. Because as long as it's incomprehensible, of course, it's going to be wrong in the system. Because I do it all the time, trying to get the IRS to do things that they don't even understand. And they can't do it because you have to walk them through one step by step. And so I think that's just a bad law. So that law has to change. And then we have to get the audit to figure out who's been neglected. But we really, it's hard to even know who's neglected if you don't even know what they're supposed to be in the first place. How do you even know that? And then, so that piece has to come first, I think. Is one of the first is how we need to redefine and get a simple definition. And then the second piece, I think, is all of our fees need to be indexed to inflation. Otherwise, it's a declining revenue source. Just like, you know? And then, and then we need to get this audit done to figure out what the effect would be within the new rules. And that's the question of how much to increase. But in my mind, if it's not indexed to inflation, it's a decreasing revenue source. I mean, the dollar amount stays fixed maybe, but it's decreasing in value, as pointed out with the library and everything. Inflation happens, currency doesn't stay at a stable value. And the, you know, and so, but I, well, we need to get this thing fixed. And as an apology to some of those members out there that maybe they're watching or maybe not, I was also pushing to get this thing up before the council. And maybe it felt like we were sidestepping the committee. But this needs, things need to be pushed forward. And if it's pushed to the backseat, then, anyway, so that's my.
Okay, Council President Hensley.
Nothing, I can't wait.
Okay, Council Patton.
So I will just say this. I had a conversation with the mayor today with thoughts echoing yours. I was directed to put those thoughts into a document to send in, to then be shared with all of you folks and request that we have it put on a meeting for the 21st of May. Or is it the 21st?
Yeah.
Yes. So I guess my question is, would this body be willing to put a conversation about next steps on the street maintenance fee and directive to the task force to the May 21st meeting?
In the middle of the budget meetings?
No, I think.
Yeah, it's during the budget cycle, yeah.
It's during the budget cycle, but it's still a city council meeting on that Wednesday.
I'm not opposed to it.
Is this after it goes to the committee?
No, so my thought was, we've established that there are problems. Well, Brian, I mean, it's come up three times, right?
Okay, then run down the road.
So my thought has been, if there's, we've identified that there's problems with the formula. So what is the point in auditing the current process if we may replace it with something that's easier? So wouldn't it make more sense to direct city staff to investigate what might be an easier process to then come back to us to say, it would, these are the other options that are easier? Do you want to continue to use the crazy complicated method? Or do you want to use a different method? And then we can make a decision on that and then send whatever that directive to the street maintenance task force committee to then review. That is what I was going to put forward. Rather than, rather than continuing to go around, do that on the 21st, decide, get, you know, decide how long it's going to take city staff to put that information together and research that and then get that meeting on the agenda and then say, here's the plan. And then index it to the CPI for this next fiscal year. That's what, that's the initial thought.
And I agree with this since we got to move it forward because my limited patience is, says in my mind, my, I guess, my nightmare, wakes me up at night in a cold sweat is that you'll go to a committee and then we won't hear about it for another year.
Yeah, so that.
And that's what I want to avoid.
That's why I'm asking, is it a consensus of the council to have a meeting to talk about this on May 21st?
Or sooner, yeah.
Well, I think the problem is that the next few agendas, when I was talking to Brian.
Yeah, practical, yeah. I'm in favor of doing it as soon as.
Okay. Anybody else? We only need one more.
Sure.
Okay, great. So the rest of my update is this. The Heritage Landmarks Commission, you got some of the information from Carol tonight. Some of the things that I think is great is that they are looking at doing handbook for new members and that they are also, I did a presentation about our reviews or our goals and that they are looking to do some of their own goals that will marry up with ours. I also attended the groundbreaking at the OLCC building. That was great. I would ask for staff, can we look into a program for like scheduling reminders for things like the franchise agreements, the comprehensive plan, reviewing city goal, like city goals and operating guidelines, like the Parks Master Plan and stuff, something that will have some staying power? And also, if the city has like a doomsday book for information such as that so that it's centralized and so if for some reason everybody goes, that information is not lost. And then I was curious as to what is up with the abandoned rat house? Do we have any information about that?
Abandoned rat house?
Yeah, the house that was, that was on fire, that had rats in it that people were complaining about. I've never, I've not heard whether that got taken care of.
Sold and leveled.
Yeah, that's done.
It's sold.
Okay, well, great. Apparently, I'm the only one that was in the dark on that. So that's it.
Took me a minute, like vacant rat? I'm like, what?
Abandoned rat house.
Okay, next to the agenda, city administrator business and staff reports. Ms. Stein.
Counsel, in your packet is the current chart or the chart of the city attorney's expenses. It's gone quite up. We've had some personnel matters that have had to be attended to. And so that's, that's my report. Actually, I take that back. I was listening to the mid-year budget review meeting again today. And Council Sterns, you had made a comment about having a citizen, not a citizen, but having some kind of a work session in advance of the budget that, so that you could understand what the city does. And when Marissa was giving her presentation, I felt like, well, that's, you know, you have a better understanding of what's involved and what's facing the library fund now. But you don't have that same kind of level of insight on especially the general fund programs. Do you need that kind of intensive level of understanding of what each of the general fund programs provide so that you are in a better position to make decisions on the budget? So I wanted to kind of return to your comment.
I really did like her presentation. I did not go through all the questions because I figured we'd be here until midnight if I did. One of the things that I personally would appreciate more, which I think that you guys will probably hate me for, is I would like to have more open discussion works, work sessions where we can not just, I would like even like the presentation by the, to be very high level and that we can talk about it. For example, we talked about in the budget committee how there's perhaps a potential shortfall. So I would love to have two or three meetings or at least one, well, I don't know, one long meeting might be too long, but to go over that and get ideas and how that will be addressed. Now, we have the budget cycle, but generally, my experience with the budget cycles, both as a budget committee member a while ago and currently, is that we're sort of presented with the budget. In fact, it was about 10 years ago. I just started proposing changes just for, in my mind, for fun to see if anybody would consider them. But it seemed like it was pretty much set before we actually went to the meeting, which kind of like, okay, the, I propose moving money to this police department and they all said, no, we don't want to. So I was like, okay. But I like, but I like to be able to discuss and talk about the problem more than just flesh it out. And I know probably you guys as city administrators prefer to do that in your own and then come up with something nice and shiny and pretty. But I almost prefer myself to be in, in looking in the details and proposing things like, why not increase the fee from 10 cents to 25 cents, you know? Which may not fix the problem, probably won't. But the, but idea is that where we can brainstorm as a council instead of being just told as a council, here's what we're going to do and nod your head, you know? So that, I don't know if that explains a little bit my idea. So I would, to answer, go back to your question. I would love to have more of those budget sessions on the things that are important, say like police, you know, the streets, those kind of things where we'd say, hey, what's in the budget? What's, why are we, why are we choosing this versus that? Why are we having high-level librarians do low-level work? Why? Well, because we don't have the pages. But isn't the page cheaper than the high level? That's in my mind. I'm thinking maybe as an accountant, but why would you, why would anybody have expensive people doing cheap, I mean, just as a broad over simplification, but I think you know where I'm going. And I think that's, well, because there's no money for the, for the less expensive labor. And I'm like, well, if you're looking to think about money, you have money for less expensive labor because it makes, reduces the need for more expensive labor. So those are the kinds of discussions I would love to have. And I can say for time constraints, I had all, I was typing all the way, all those just ideas because of, of course, I forget them if I don't type them down once I have them. But it'd be nice to do that for other budget-challenged programs where we can say, hey, why haven't you tried this? Well, because it's stupid. Okay, you told me it's stupid, but at least, at least we have, we get some dialogue back and forth, you know? I can tease you.
I don't know if there was a directive in there.
Yeah. The directive is, yes, I would like to have more meetings. Okay.
Yeah, the only reason that I mention it is.
With dialogue.
Just looking at the schedule. The only possible time that I can think it could be done on an off Wednesday is that fifth Wednesday of the month, which is April 30th. And the budget will probably already be at the printers. So the, so we could have an educational session, but it's not going to impact, the budget will already be put together at that point in time.
But with all, kind of due respect, and I don't want to pick this the wrong way, if the budget's already printed before we get to review and make changes to it, then what's the point of the budget meetings?
It's a proposed budget.
Okay.
So when we go into those meetings, they're still just proposed numbers.
Okay.
So we could take from X and put into Y. Or ask for that explanation of like, great, so we're opting to go, you know, no staff at this position and moving it over here, explain that. You know, or we're cutting, you know, these services to make the numbers work. Why is that? Why are those services on the chopping block versus?
Yeah, I think so. Work session to educate before going is, I think, is a good idea. But then again, I'm just for more punishment, I guess, in these meetings.
Well, and I would just say that to that point, even though the budget is like that, it took us how many years to do a mid-year budget review? We did pseudo-budget, mid-year budget reviews. This could be like a beta test of the process.
I mean, you have, you give ideas, you make mistakes, you move forward. But I don't think, I don't, I think, I think it would be progress to do that kind of meeting.
So is there interest in having a work, a budget work session on April 30th or?
For me, there is, but if no one else wants to, I'll do something else that evening.
Okay. I'm not hearing any interest.
I think we're close enough that we're going to be able to ask the same questions two weeks later.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, appreciate you posing the question. Great dialogue, excellent. Anything else in your, in your wheelhouse tonight? No, okay. Our two citizens, do you wish to opine? No, okay.
Mr. Mayor. Oh, never mind. Never mind.
Action review. Yes, we did have a lot.
You approved the consent agenda. You adopted ordinance 1641. You approved ordinance 1642 to a second reading on May 5th, 2025. You tabled Resolution 1426 to the May 7th, 2025 meeting. You approved Resolutions 1427, 1428, 1429, 1430, and 1431. And you also decided to bring back discussion on the street maintenance fees on the May 21st meeting.
Excellent, thank you very much. I will take a, we do have an executive session this evening. So I will take a motion to move into executive session, please.
Mr. Mayor, may we move into executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660, parent two, parent I, to review and evaluate the job performance of a chief executive officer.
Second.
Motion made by Council President Hensley and second by Council Davis to move into executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660, parent two, parent I. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are in executive session. Cambie, have a great evening.